Good evening. Today is Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024. I hereby call this meeting to order at 5:01 PM. Dr. Edward Zuniga, can you give us a roll call?
Yes, good evening everyone. We'll start off with member Carlos Sarcedo.
President.
Member Riones is running late, but he is not present at this time. Member Estela Tardes Segres.
Here.
Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga, Superintendent of the Almani Union High School District. At this time, we are going to be going into closed session. I'll go ahead and defer to our attorney from Olivares San Madruga Law Organization, Mr. Attorney Terrance Gallagher. Can you please read us into closed session?
Yes, Mr. President, the closed session will be on the items specified on Section A 2 of the published agenda. Item 2A, Government Code Section 54956.9D2 and E1, potential litigation in one matter. And Item B, Government Code Section 54957.6, labor negotiations for EMUEA.
Thank you very much, Attorney Terrance Gallagher from OMLO Olivares San Madruga Law Organization. Do we have any public comment, Dr. Zuniga?
No public comment.
Hearing none, the board will recess into closed session and we will be back out at 6:00 PM.
Thank you so much, Ms. Anne Ng. Please stay here. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Edward Zuniga to tell us a little bit about you, and then we have a special recognition for you.
Yeah, good evening again, and welcome back. I know Ms. Ng was here last week, as a matter of fact, and she is now part of our Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council, which allows two members from the school community, parents, to engage with the superintendent and some of the guests, some of our board members that are able to attend, and we speak about what parents feel would benefit students at our school. So we want to thank you for that. I invited her back because she's not only one of our parents, folks, she's also one of our district employees and works at Rosemead High School. And her responsibility is to support the students at Rosemead High School, more specific to English language learners, whether it's newcomers that are arriving to the country or students that are transitioning from their native language to actually English. So we're very fortunate to have Ms. Ng at Rosemead High School. We're blessed that she not only has demonstrated exemplary, not only as far as connectedness to students, but how also she engages the families and celebrates the cultures of all our students, whether it's students coming from Latino communities, Hispanic communities, or students arriving from either China, from Vietnamese. So our demographics at Rosemead High School, if you know, they're a 50-50 population there. She does a wonderful job embracing our kids, our English language learners, but also not only our English language learners, but also all of the students at Rosemead High School. So on behalf of the district, we want to thank you not only for leniency with the pledge of allegiance, but also for representing Rosemead very well as an employee there. So thank you for your contribution. But we're excited that you are now on the other side and also advocating for parents and parent engagement too. So thank you. So it's a win-win for all of us and also just the contributions that you have on both ends that we're very fortunate to have. So thank you, Ms. Ng. The board will now go down and also present you with the certificate of recognition. So we're going to do that this time. If I can invite the board down right next to Ms. Ng.
Yes, so we have a certificate of appreciation. This certificate is presented to Ms. Anne Ng from Rosemead High School, home of the mighty Panthers, my alma mater. And it's a pleasure to recognize our parents. And as Professor Stela Torres de Seigres has taught me, is that parents are our children's first teachers. And she's not only a parent, but she's also the teacher. And I have to tell you that during the time that I've been on this board, this board has always advocated for the rights of English language learners and making sure that our English language learners have diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that they get reclassified and just the contributions that you have on both ends now that we're very fortunate to have. So thank you, Ms. Eng. The board will now go down and also provide you, present you with the certificate of recognition. So we're going to do that at this time. If I can invite the board down right next to Ms. Eng. Yeah, so we have a certificate of appreciation. Uh, this certificate is presented to Ms. Anne Eng from Rosemead High School, uh, home of the Mighty Panthers, my alma mater. And, uh, i- it's a pleasure to recognize our parents and, uh, uh, as Professor Estela Torres de Seigres has taught me is that parents are our children's first teachers. And, uh, she's not only a parent, but she's also the teacher. And I have to tell you that during the time that I've been on this board, this board has always advocated for the rights of English language learners and making sure that our English language learners have, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion and that they get reclassified in a timely manner so that they're able to be successful and go on to college. And, uh, I have been in your room many a times and she does this awesome thing where she does the, kind of like the Hall of Fame and she's got, you know, Hall of Fame with a bunch of pictures, but she does like a Hall of Fame for kids that have been reclassified and you can go into her classroom and see a beautiful bulletin board of all these kids who get reclassified. And when you get reclassified, you no longer have to take an English language development class. Uh, you can now take a, uh, an A through G class that will prepare, better prepare you for college. And so I give you so much credit and I love going into your room and thank you for the work that you do. And just like Dr. Zuniga said, not only does she advocate for Latino students, but also for our Asian students. And, and Rosemead High School is a very interesting place. It's a 50/50 school, 50% Latino and 50% Asian. And, uh, they do a great job of ensuring that they speak multiple languages at that school. And I know that you have a lot to do with that. So I take my hat off to you and being an English language learner myself, I still can't speak English clearly and, and mess it up, but it's teachers like you that ensure that our kids get that, uh, formal register, not just the BICs, but also the CALPS, you know, the basic interpersonal communication skills are fine. And sometimes some of us can have those, but we might not have the, the cognitive language that you need to succeed in college. So this certificate is awarded in sincere appreciation of your exemplary service and invaluable contributions in supporting our school community. As a parent leader at Rosemead High School, your commitment to enhancing the educational experience for students is truly commendable in appreciation and it's signed by the entire Board of Education from the El Monte Union High School District. Congratulations. And along with this, you also get a lapel pin that our trustee, uh, is going to present to you. And we give, we wear that with a lot of pride. It's what we, the board members, wear and we give it anytime that we have a special recognition and tonight is one of those oppor- those moments. Okay, so congratulations to you. There you go. We can give her her pin and then I will allow my colleagues to also share a few words. I'll start off with my Vice President, Secretary, and then we'll, we'll give everybody else an opportunity. Uh, Vice President Qui?
Oh, I have a pleasure and honor to know you, especially when you bring all the Latino parents to the park, you know, and introduce them to me and, you know, and it's, it's very touching move and you really advocate for everybody, you know, you embrace everybody, even though you can speak Spanish, but still I saw your action. Yeah, I saw your action, you know, actions speak louder than words. I very much, I mean, I don't care about the title, what title you have, but who you are is make a big difference. I always merit the people and who they are, not, not what their title represent. And you, you even, I know, I always know you as a EL Tosa from Rosemead High School, but you're just such a wonderful person and you, you know, you help so many immigrant and English learner. I know for sure a lot of Latino parents really appreciate you very much that they talk in Spanish. But anyway, uh, I just know I have limited Spanish, but able to understand it. And congratulations with your, your recognition.
Anne, thank you very much for extending your love for your own children. We always do something for our own children. Let's take that in your mind. We always start because our own children were there. I have three children in El Monte Union High School District and I was very involved with them. But then slowly, slowly, we have to start extending that love to the rest of the children. And the rest of the students are ours. One day they become, uh, your own children and you love them. And I really thank you for doing that. Thank you so much, Anne.
Uh, just, uh, from the bottom of my heart, I just want to thank you for choosing to wear multiple hats and, and representing our students and our community in, in very important ways. So, um, I just personally want to thank you and, uh, let you know that I appreciate you. So thank you.
Hello. Um, as, as my colleagues have been saying, I think that that's very important that you include everyone, not just the students, but the teachers, because like Doc, like Mr. Padilla said, the parents are our first teachers. And if, and if they're not involved, then how do we expect the students to succeed when, when our parents are pushing us, right? So I think that's very important, especially being part of the superintendent's, um, super PAC. I think that's amazing. The, what Mr. Qui Win said about you introducing him to the Latino parents, you know, like at times you feel like, oh, maybe I won't understand him or he won't understand me, but it's, it's the action that counts, not just your words, your actions. Thank you.
Thank you for being here with us today. I thank you for wearing multiple hats and serving not only your own children, but all of our children here in the community. Thank you for leading us in the pledge today. Welcome.
So we're going to take a picture with the board, Ms. Eng, and then we'd love to, if you have any, but one else that's came with you today after the picture, invite them up, we'll take a picture with them too, okay? If you have anyone else.
Well, you know what? Let me allow her to say a final.
Sure, of course.
Uh, so, uh, I'm very thankful and then very honored to represent the parents from our school and also the parents' community. And as I said, uh, I'm also very fortunate to be able to wear multiple hats that allow me to see all the challenges and difficulty in different role, right? But as a staff, I'm also, um, very proud to say that, uh, the parents are very supportive with multiple opportunities to learn and also to excel. And also, uh, we have a lot of resources and support from the district. So I am grateful for that. And I also would like to applaud the district's effort to include parents' voices and also to involve parents, uh, in a lot of different activities because, um, as a mom, and then I also work with the teachers at our school, I have a lot of confidence in my colleague and I know that the teachers do a really good job all the times to educate the students. So my, my job as a mom is going to support, okay, that, that the person who helped my child to be successful. So it is really a, a team effort. Whatever that we do is really a team effort. The parents, I really hope that everybody's going to involve more and then be able to be part of, like, this, um, educational journey with your student.
Do you have any family?
Um, so they are not, they are not here. I live in Anaheim and so.
We're going to take a picture with the board and then one without the board. Okay? That's a long drive. Before I continue with tonight's meeting, um, I would like to, uh, we have, we have some special guests here. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure who's here, but I know that we have some elected officials here tonight. And I apologize, I should have recognized you before I, I started. Um. Okay, so, uh, I'll turn it over to Dr. Zuniga and then if, if he captures some elected officials and then, uh, I will announce the ones that I have seen. So, uh, Dr. Zuniga, if you want to start off, we'll go with the highest ranking office first and then we'll go down the line.
Sure. And, uh, you could probably help me out because I do have the first person here on my first page, representing Mike Fong, 49th Assembly District, California State Assembly Member. Mike Fong's office is Mauricio Lopez, Field Representative.
Yes. Mauricio, if you could please stand up and raise your hand so everybody could see who you are. There you go, Mauricio.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Dr. Zuniga?
I believe I also saw from the city of Rosemead, representing the city is, uh, Mayor Protem Margaret Clark. Are you here, Ms.? I thought I saw her earlier. Maybe, maybe I missed her.
Okay.
Okay. And also scheduled to be here, I just want to recognize them in case I, they come, they come a little later, uh, Sean Dang, Council Member Two.
From the city of Rosemead.
City of Rosemead, correct.
And, and also with us tonight, also an elected official is Mr. David Seigres. He's a, uh, a board member with the El Monte City School District. As many of you guys know, we're not a unified school district, we're only high school, but he's, uh, the neighboring district, TK through eighth grade. Mr. David Seigres, can you please stand and raise your hand so everybody, uh, sees you? Thank you. Are there any other field representatives for many other, uh, elected, uh, offices? I apologize. We also have the Honorable Mr. Ryan Liu from Pasadena City College. Yes, we, uh, the entire board or, or a majority of the board was out there. Uh, for those of you that don't know, Pasadena City College just celebrated their 100th anniversary and it was such a special celebration. Uh, Honorable Mr. Liu, and it's a pleasure for you to be here tonight. So thank you again for being here. Anybody else? Dr. Edward Zuniga?
I don't, I don't believe so, but if we do see somebody, we'll be sure to make sure that they're announced.
Yes, I want, I want to make sure that we don't miss anybody. So, uh, thank you again to all the electeds that made time to come out here and be with us. Uh, so I'm going to move this meeting right along. I'm going to move on to item B, B as in boy, and item number three, Board President Ricardo Padilla's poem. Those of you guys that regularly watch our board meetings know that I've always modeled my presidency after my colleague, Professor Estela Torres de Seigres. When I watched her be president on the board, she would always start off with a special saying, something positive or a poem to, uh, get us on the, on the right frame of mind. And I have a lot of respect for Professor Estela Torres de Seigres. Uh, she amazes me at, at all that she does for the students of this school district. And so, uh, again, in your honor, Professor Estela Torres de Seigres, um, "In El Monte Union High School District halls, we gather to celebrate and give our all, to recognize great teachers who shine so bright, and our Teacher of the Year, a beacon of sight. Your hard work, commitment, resiliency, and passion too exemplify excellence in all you do. Inspiring students with lessons that last, a testament to your dedication that will forever last. We're proud of your efforts and all that you bring to the classroom and the lives of our students who sing. You praise in gratitude for guiding them along the path to knowledge and a brighter song. But as we celebrate, let's not forget to prioritize self-care and what we've not met. One month and a half into school years, into the school year's pace, take time to breathe and find your own space. Schedule that doctor's appointment long overdue. Take care of your health and see it through. Spend time with loved ones, cherish every moment. Don't feel guilty, take a break and reclaim your focus. Take your parents to their appointments and hold their hand. Your family and health are worth more than any plan. Find hobbies outside works demanding pace. Recharge and refuel in a peaceful space. Burnout lose if balance we don't find. Your well-being matters, leave guilt behind. As Board President, I stress attendance and care, but your health tops all beyond compare. Wealth can't replace it, remember this truth. Take care of yourself in all your youth. I'll keep reminding you, don't you forget, your health is precious and we need you at your best. Tonight, we also honor Boys and Girls State Delegates too. Your leadership and potential shine through. Congratulations on this esteemed recognition. May your experiences shape your view, your future's vision. Thank you, dear teachers, for all that you do in El Monte Union High School District. We're proud of you. Keep shining, but take care along the way. Your well-being matters every single day. To our educators and principals, we appreciate your tireless efforts day after day create. Find balance and prioritize your health. We need you strong and well for our students' wealth." Moving on to item B five, consider approval of Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes for August 28th, 2024, Special Meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
I have a motion to approve by Board Member Qui Win. Can I get a second? I have a second by Board Member Mr. Carlos Alcedo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting, uh, minutes are approved. Item B six, consider approval of Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes for September 4th, 2024, Regular Meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
I have a motion to approve by Board Member Mr. Mr. Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
I got a second by Board Member Professor Estela Torres de Seigres. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting, uh, motion carries. Item seven, consider approval of Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes for September 18th, 2024, Special Meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Move to approve by Board Member Professor Estela Torres de Seigres. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui Win. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Item. B eight. At this time, I would like to recognize, or I take that back. I'm going to go a little bit out of order here. Just, just bear with me. I'm going to go on to do the recognition of El Monte Union High School District educators for their exceptional instructional leadership. We're going to be recognizing some, uh, teachers, some educators, and then we will also recognize our Teacher of the Year. But Dr. Zuniga, can you help me out here with the recognition of El Monte Union High School educators, uh, recognition for their exceptional instructional leadership?
Absolutely. I just want to, uh, want to double check. Did we approve the agenda overall on record? If we can approve the agenda before we move forward, so we on record?
Oh, wow. Yeah, Mr. Padilla got a little excited here, right? Uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for today, Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a second by Board Member Professor Estela Torres de Seigres. All those in favor to approve tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved, motion carries. Now, Dr. Zuniga, go ahead and let's go down to, uh, the recognition of, uh, El Monte Union High School District educators. Go right ahead.
So we are now on item B 11, correct?
Seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. That is correct.
Wonderful.
B 11, yes.
Wonderful. Again, good evening, everyone. Uh, it's our, it's our pleasure for us to present three of our very own, our educators that have committed, uh, that have actually not only committed to our district for decades already. We're talking about over three decades, some nearing four decades of years of service to this community. And it's the board's responsibility and also really just pleasure to bring forth this recognition to some of our educators who have made an impact on our students, our school community, on their colleagues, and also have transformed how we see our school communities through the vision of our educators too. Uh, with mentoring for our new teachers that are coming in through some of our educators that have been with us for many years too. So I'm proud to, uh, know all these individuals, these three that were recognized or re-recognized this evening. I've had the pleasure of working through many avenues, whether on the site or whether, uh, at the bargaining table and also just, uh, you know, sitting down and having conversation with them every day too, and, and seeing the exciting work that they do have. I want to invite first our principal at Aurora High School, who will be providing some background on our teacher who is being recognized from Aurora High School. So I'll invite Mr. Gabe Flores. And as he makes his way up here, I will introduce the teacher. Uh, we are recognizing Mr. Tony Wong. He's a, a Royal High School math teacher and he be- became an instructional aide back in 1990 at Rosemead High School. So he started off as actually an instructional aide, helping the teacher. And that went on until 19, uh, 1994, when he became and hired as a full-time teacher at a Royal High School in 1994. So we're, we're talking about, uh, many years of service at one particular school and it'll be at a Royal High School. About, I'll hand it over to Mr. Flores to give you some details about the work that he does. every day at Arroyo High School and the feedback he has on our students.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here, and more importantly, thank you, Mr. Wong, for being here this evening. A little bit about Mr. Wong, first of all, he's an absolutely amazing educator. I want to share some information, some data about, a little bit about how he works with our students. He teaches our calculus students, but primarily, he really focuses on our calculus AB and our BC students. These are the creme de la creme. These are the best students that we have on our campus academically. Just to give you an idea, in 2022, he had 76 kids take the AP test, the calculus AB test. Seventy-three percent passed with the three, four, or five. Globally, the average is 55%. But he was literally almost 20% above the average. That was in 2022. With the BC students, a passing rate of 85% in 2022. Globally, the percentage was 76%. I'm going to shift over to 2023. Eighty-two students, 70% passing rate with calculus AB. Globally, the passing rate was 58%. Again, far above the global average. With BC, 43 students, 83%, 78% globally. And in 2024, he had 89 students, this was last year, and 76% passed. 64 was the passing rate globally, so he was clearly over the passing rate as well. The guy, he is absolutely amazing. He does a phenomenal job. He tutors our students before, during, and after school. He celebrates their success by posting up how they, how well they do academically. I have a comment from the Department Chair, Ms. Pat Espinoza, and she shared, "I've had the honor of working with Tony Wong for many years, and I'm continually amazed by his ability to instill confidence and a can-do spirit in his students. His exemplary teaching techniques, dedication, patience, and unwavering belief in each student's potential result in consistently high pass rates on the AP calculus exam year after year. Tony's commitment to excellence is truly inspiring, and I am proud to call him both a colleague and a friend." And I think the ultimate form of respect is the following. Mr. Wong's birthday is on November 18th. As long as I can remember, on his birthday, all of his students dress up and look just like him on his birthday. If you don't believe me, come to our site on November 18th, and you will see all of the students dressed just like Mr. Wong, like always professionally, wearing a tie, looking amazing. So, Mr. Wong, congratulations, job well done, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Flores. I'll hand it over back to our Board President, we'll be recognizing Mr. Wong, and if he could make his way up here, Mr. Wong. We'll go down and meet you.
Board, can join me down? All right, so we have a certificate of recognition, together with our special lapel pin that we give to all of our individuals that we recognize. And this certificate of recognition is presented to Mr. Tony Wong for your exceptional dedication and excellence in teaching. Your commitment to fostering a positive and engaging learning environment has inspired students at Arroyo High School. Your efforts in going above and beyond to support students' success are deeply valued. You are a role model for excellence in education, and we are proud to honor you for your remarkable achievements. Congratulations from the El Monte Union High School District Board of Trustees. I will now turn it over to my Vice President, Mr. Qui Nguyen. He's got some words and also some certificates from the Rosemead City Council. Go right ahead.
Congratulations, Mr. Wong. The Mayor Protem Margaret Clark is not here today. She tried to be here, but she couldn't make it today. But I have all the certificate for all the teacher, and you are one of them, you know, to be recognized by the City of Rosemead. And as a Rosemedian, as a citizen of, you know, Rosemead, I'm here to present you the City of Rosemead Award recognition for Tony Wong, math teacher at Arroyo High School. The City of Rosemead recognizes Tony Wong for his exceptional instructional leadership in the El Monte Union High School District. We commend you for your commitment to empowering and motivating student. We wish you a success in your future endeavor. Something about Mr. Wong, I just want to add, I just been on board like 20 months, but I, his name, I mean, preceded. I, you know, and I bring some, some of the stuff that I have from, I collected. These are how-to handbook, calculus AB and BC. These, he should have copyrighted, because you know why? I went to some of the pay-for tutoring service, expensive one, they're using his material. With, you know, you should have a copyright and make some money out of it. See, you see how famous you are? Some pay-for service tutoring, affluent community, they use your material. And I came across, you know, some of your former students, now doctor, scientist, dentist, and it's amazing, you know, how much they love you, how much they love you in, you know, in Arroyo High School. And I say, you know, when, you know, and you very humble, you know, I mean, definitely you very low-key and humble, you're not like boasting anything, you just keep teaching. I mean, the, the evidence evolves, you know, there's volume of evidence that your dedication, especially after school. There's some kid couldn't even take the, you know, Latino kid, you know, they couldn't pass the AP. You tutor them after school, and you know what? One of, one of them become a math teacher. You see, the amazing thing, you have impact on the student. You don't know that, but I know that because I come across them. And anybody that, you know, that want to go to UC and don't take your class, they're not going to make it, for sure. And, you know, and, and, you know, for that, I really, you know, appreciate you as a board member and as a community. And, you know, I really appreciate, you know, your dedication and service to El Monte Union High School District. And, you know, I bring all of these stuff I collected from, you know, those touring service that very expensive, they use your material. I just keep stressing, you are, you're one of the wonder of, you know, asset in our El Monte Union High School District. And congratulations. Here, your certificate.
Mr. Wong, you are really a great teacher because to have your students to come for your birthday and come dressing like you, they really love you. And you know why? Because you injected in them the love of math. Ay, 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 math is so hard, as I couldn't do it very well, even when my dad was working really hard with me. But I can see with all the things that I, we have been hearing about you, that you love your profession, you love your students, and both things combined are the ones that they gave great success to our students. Thank you so much for being such a wonderful human being. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Wong, I will tell you, like Mr. Nguyen said, you know, your reputation precedes you. Living in close proximity to Arroyo, you're one of the teachers that neighbors talk about and that appreciate and are always trying to, you know, talk to the board member to try and get into your class, or, you know, it's full, or what have you. But, you know, maybe, maybe we officially at Arroyo, make, you know, November 18th, you know, Mr. Wong Day or something. But I won't believe it until I see Mr. Flores dressed like you, so. There we go, Mr. Flores. Anyway, just, just know that you're truly appreciated, not only because we're congratulating you and, but really, I think as educators, we really appreciate it when it comes from our own students, from our own parents. It's far more genuine, and I know that for you, it probably means a lot more. So, anyway, thank you so much.
I want to echo Mr. Salcedo's sentiments, November 18th, Mr. Wong Day at Arroyo, because the world needs more Mr. Wong's. You know, math is always such a hard subject to teach to students, sometimes if they're not motivated, sometimes it just, it's something that we struggle with, myself included as a student. But hearing from your principal, hearing from other board members, being in your classroom during back-to-school night and open house over the last few years, seeing the dedication that you have, I really appreciate the work that you put in for our students and the amazing output that we get, you know, as Mr. Flores has already shared with those AP scores. So, congratulations on this recognition today. Thank you for spending some time with us this evening.
Just like my colleagues have been saying, Mr. Wong, like making an impression on students, having them dress up as you on your birthday, that's so impactful. Like, imagine a student coming up and they, and you see them in an outfit, and you're like, what are you wearing? It's like, oh, I'm Mr. Wong. Of course, you're going to know who Mr. Wong is after a time. And, and the fact that you went over the national average of passing an AP calculus class, like that's amazing. Imagine, I know I struggled with pre-calculus, I can't imagine an AP calculus class, and for you to push the students, for you to tutor them to pass, I think that's amazing. Congratulations.
I just want to, hello? I just want to add something, I want to acknowledge something. Some of your fellow math teacher, I, I see them here, Mr. Wu from Rosemead High School, he's a calculus teacher. He admire you, that's why he here. He look, he bring his kid, he stand outside. And, you know, Mr. Tim Dawn is the math toaster. So, you know, they're, they're all here to honor you, and one thing, you know, you have to be remember, he's the only teacher who capable of teaching calculus CD. It used, we used to have in Arroyo. That's the highest calculus math, and it's very difficult subject to teach. He only, he's the only teacher that can teach calculus CD in our school district, and that, that very commendable, yes.
Thank you, Board Member, Mr. Qui Nguyen. I also want to acknowledge, we did get an email from Dr. Patricia Filamoah. She had every intention of being here, but she had a little problem with her, she twisted her ankle, and I hope she's okay. But she wanted to be here to also commend you and thank you for the work that you do. And I know the principal talked about some of the passing rates that, that Mr. Wong has, but I remember looking at some chart or data where, there were years where you had 100% of your students that passed the, the class and, and all that. So, that was very impressive. I know that we talk about like 76%, but I remember seeing the chart. There's a chart that shows the, the BC, AB calculus, BC, and there were some years that he had 100% of his students pass, and that, that is phenomenal. So, congratulations on behalf of the board, and we'll allow you some few words.
It's an honor to be here, and I feel lucky and grateful that of this year, it just took me a few seconds to step up here. It took me 30 years to receive this award. And I'm not surprised when Mr. Nguyen told me that some touring center, they use my material. Because actually, when I went online, I saw my material everywhere. Yeah. I told my sense that I wrote all this handbook here for you, free, not for money. If I want money, then I should not be in this career. I make a lot of animations to make the calculus stuff much easier to learn. And I come here every day in the morning, lunchtime, and I need to switch my lunchtime. I use my conference hour to have my lunch against my political clock. Last year, I got the period still okay, but this year, I got second period. I still have my lunch second period, and that's where I can save lunchtime, that the open, so someone can come over to get help. But I know that every minute I invest here, it pay off. Every year, there are two days, I feel so happy. The first day, when cross-board released the AP results. Let Mr. President just mention, in some years, my BC students passing rate is 100%. And then I taught calculus CD for eight years, also free. I use my conference hour to teach. But all this right here, it's not for money, it's for love. Because I know that if they have good future, then I feel happy. So, today, again, I feel honored to be here, to be recognized. Your recognition is greatly appreciated.
Yes, Zuniga, you want to make money after retirement. Don't jump ship now. If you want to make extra money after your retirement, see me. I introduce you, you make more money than you do now.
All right, we're going to go ahead and get a picture, one with the board, and then one with the, we, we know the drill, guys. Yeah, if the board can just go ahead and stay down here. Alma or whoever's handling that, can you move the, the agenda so I can come back? Or you know what? No, leave it there. Dr. Edward Zuniga, I believe we have two more.
Thank you. This is going to continue our recognition. This is the second employee of the El Monte Union High School District who is being recognized this evening on behalf of the board. It's my pleasure also to bring forth Annette Felix. Come on up here, Ms. Felix. And I hope I got this right. I'd love to share a little bit about her teaching career here at El Monte Union High School District before I invite our interim Principal, Ms. Frog up here. If you just want to make your way up here right now, Ms. Frog, you're welcome to do so. But I do note that Ms. Frog became part of El Monte Union High School District in 1982 as a part-time adult ed teacher, and that went on to October 7th, 1998, according to our records. She became our full-time educator at the adult school, which we call El Monte Rosemead Adult School, on October 8th, 1998, a day after she left her part-time position. She spearheads the CTE department, and I have to tell you that Annette and myself have a wonderful relationship. Even before I, I was the superintendent, I worked with her alongside, when we talked, when we talked negotiations through the adult school, she was representing the adult school, and I was representing the district under the Assistant Superintendentcy of Human Resources. We be, we have a strong bond, communicated together. But we also fell in love with our stories that we shared about our families, about our history of El Monte, how much we love this community, how much we love El Monte Union High School District. And the wonderful family she comes with, the family of educators from Mr. Felix, her husband, and also her sons that are actually educators in our school right now, you know, specific to Rosemead High School. And it's a family of educators that make us all proud because they're part of our community too. And, you know, I, I'm just so fond of her and her friendship, and she's just a cool person to be around with. We just talk to her, just see how things are going and, and what she's doing with her family too. But most importantly, I think she's here because the impact she's played at the adult school, El Monte Rosemead Adult School, and the love she has for not only the students there, the actual school community, her ideas, all the things that she helped transform the adult school into making it one, a prime adult school in the entire state of California. Believe it or not, we are up there ranked as far as having one of the most prestigious programs in California because our, of our educators and our community that we serve as well. I'd like to hand it over to our, to her principal, Ms. Carrie Frog, who has a little bit more insight about, you know, the, the things that she does every day on campus now. So, welcome, Ms. Frog.
And those of you that don't know, she is our, our acting principal right now at what we call MRAS, but it stands for El Monte Rosemead Adult School. but it stands for Almani Rosemead Adult School. Almonte Rosemead Adult School, and we are very proud of the Almani Rosemead Adult School, one of the premier adult schools in the state of California because of educators like Ms. Felix. So Ms. Frog, take it away.
Thank you. To expand on what Dr. Zuniga was saying, Annette Felix began her 43-year career at Almani Rosemead Adult School. She's, was hired to teach various business courses and her favorite was accounting. She has been teaching, she was teaching for 32 years before she became the CTE lead teacher. As that teacher, she's a department lead, she supports our other CTE teachers, she mentors them, she assists with curriculum and the program administrator. She has helped to create one of the most prestigious CTE programs in the state. Her, over the course of her career, her passion has never dwindled. Her, she's an inspiration to see, to work with, to watch. Her family is extremely important to her and we have the pleasure of having some of them with us at our school as well. Her most memorable moments are helping her students, seeing them succeed. She has been able to teach students that have become teachers, teachers at our school, that have become clerical staff in the district. And her passion and her dedication to meeting them where they are at and helping them to reach their goals is one of her most treasured and cherished parts of the job. And we are just so fortunate to have you at EMRAZ. She is very, very highly respected at our school. So we just wanna wish you all the best and congratulate you for this great honor, you deserve it.
Thank you, Ms. Frog. So I hereby present this certificate of recognition to Ms. Annette Felix for your outstanding contributions to the Almani Rosemead Adult School, better known as EMRAZ and the community. This recognition is a reflection of your commitment as an educational leader and your ability to inspire and engage students in meaningful ways. Your dedication, compassion, and positive impact on students and staff are instrumental to the values of our adult school program. We are incredibly proud of the work that you do. Congratulations from the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. We present the certificate and also our very prestigious lapel pin that we give to very special people like yourself. Congratulations.
Wow, wow, wow. I just met you only one time, but I already impressed. You know, these, these recognition doesn't come from your principal, doesn't come from administrator. You know where they come from? Student, student. I call this student award, you know, student. I interview them and you know, they speak highly of you and they feel belonging to your EMRAZ. You know, and that's why you should be recognized, you know, the same thing. All these teachers that are not recommended, often not, you know, because he's a, you know, Mr. Ayala is getting Oscar, okay? He is a People's Choice Award. This is student choice award, okay? The student named you, named Mr. Wong, and named, you know, Mr. Leonard. Because I interviewed the student, I went to their classroom, I went to your place and you know, I spent a lot of time to find out what happening, you know, and it doesn't come from the thin sky, you know. So you well deserve it. So this is student choice award, okay? Thank you and congratulations.
Annette, how can I tell you, so many years, huh? We started with American Legion, with your husband, Mr. Michael Felix, your mother-in-law, Mrs. Blanche Felix, who admire her like you can imagine. And her grandson, he's the grandson, is that your son, where is? Okay, oh, your son, the one who was, yeah, he was my student at Pasadena City College. I couldn't recognize you until I was looking at you very well. He was one of my students and now he's one of our teachers. My goodness, Annette, we are getting old, huh? You have been doing a great job. Thank you so much for being here, for being here in our city, for being here in our district, and especially for our students. It's the truth, Juan, Mr. Kui said, the students love you, the students respect you, and the students always talk very well about you. I know that because I had to go each year to go to scholarship and they always say, I was a student with Mrs. Annette Felix and she's one of the best. And I said, of course. Congratulations, Annette, congratulations to your son. I'm so happy to see you after so many years. And you graduated from PCC and from there, you went to, you cannot hear our teacher. Congratulations.
Aw, Ms. Felix. No, what am I gonna say? There's nothing bad. Yeah, I've known Annette and her husband and her kids, you know, for a long time now and you know, it's one of those when if I'm coming off the freeway and I'm driving home, I drive up Rose Glen and I always look over to see if I see any one of them. Always, but it's always great memories, it's always great discussions about our kids and you know, it's always somehow related to our community and how we can help and accelerate our kids and you know, make them, make them just better members of our community. So the fact that, you know, our conversations are always centered around, around our community and our kids, I mean, tells you a lot of where Annette's heart is and her mind at all times. And her kids, the same way, and Mr. Felix and you know, I still have fond memories, you know. So just big hugs to everybody and I'm so glad that you're one of the ones that we're recognizing today. So thank you.
I think everything's been said already. The only thing I wanted to add is every time I've been on campus or at EMRAZ, you've always welcomed me and I think that's why you're here today. Not because you've always welcomed me, but because you're so welcoming to your students, to everyone who sets foot on that campus. You project an energy that attracts people to you and it's a genuine energy and a positive energy. And it really shows how much you care about your students and our community. You know, every day that I get to see you and say hi to you, run into you, it's always a wonderful day. It's always a pleasure being on campus and I'm really glad that you're here being recognized today. And it speaks very highly of you and your dedication that you were selected to be recognized by the board. So congratulations, Annette.
Ms. Pablo?
Ms. Felix, although we have not met, I'm hearing wonderful things about you and I think what the board is saying is true. It's the teachers that make an impact on our life, the teachers that want us to pursue a higher education or shift us the right way towards what we want in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pablo. Now we will allow Ms. Felix to share a few words with us, some wisdom.
All I can say is wow. This has been a wonderful journey. I am so happy to have achieved this milestone of 43 years with the Almani Union High School District. I always, I always tell everyone I started when I was 13, but I don't wanna reveal my age. However, in thinking about it, this is actually 46 years in education because I started at the Bryman School a long time ago, teaching typing. So I did that for three years prior to coming to Almani Union High School District. So I have 46 years vested in education and it's, I'm just so blessed. I, it's been gratifying to see all my students succeed. They achieved their career goals and I am so proud that I was a part of that. And for that, I'll always be grateful. I love my job. It's, I wake up every morning, happy to go to work, which I don't think you can find many people who can say that, but I do. And it's so nice to have a personal connection with each of the board members and that you don't find very often. And speaking of that, I would like to thank the Board of Education for this wonderful recognition. It means so much to me. The district administration, I'd like to thank you, Robin Torres, she was one of my principals. And I've gone through 10 superintendents during my lifetime. So it's been, it's been a journey, sorry. But I would also like to thank my family for being here. If they could stand up, my son, Michael. My daughter, Monique. Aw, thank you, thank you. My daughter, Monique, stand up. My son, Christopher. And my daughter-in-law, Cindy. My namesake and the love of my life, Annette Felix II. And my grandson, Emilio Felix, who is, stand up. And he is my husband's twin. So, and my newest grandchild over there in the corner, Helene. And my son-in-law, Gabriel, thank you for coming to support me. I am so grateful to have a blessed family and supportive family because without you, I couldn't have done what I've done. But lastly, my husband, he couldn't be here tonight. But without his love and support, I wouldn't be where I am today. So he's very ill, but he's with us in spirit and soul and I'm glad that I had this opportunity and to acknowledge him. And also, my principal, Carrie Frog. You're an awesome principal, thank you for your support. And my administrator, Lisa Ton, she's the best CTE administrator. And I have just a lot of love and support and I'm so, so blessed and thank you again for everything.
Yeah, in a little bit, yeah. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and take a picture with Ms. Felix, the board, and then after, we'll invite the family so that we can get some more pictures. So let's do that right now. One with the board, one without. Yeah, really quickly, I apologize. The elected officials that are here, Councilman Mr. Sean Deng and also Mauricio, come on up. I know you have some certificates, but I know you have to leave also. So come on up right now, please, yeah. Welcome, Mr. Sean Deng from the city of Rosemead. Councilman, welcome for being here, thank you for being here and yeah. Go ahead, Mauricio.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Mauricio Lopez from Assemblymember Mike Fong's office. I wanna thank the board for your kind invitation to be here today. And I wanna congratulate all the teachers for, you know, for this amazing recognition. You guys are amazing. Assemblymember Mike Fong is currently the Chair of the Higher Education Committee, so he's a big advocate for students and teachers here in the 49th Assembly District. He actually, one of his bills got signed this year that would extend financial aid. It would be a financial extension, so we're very proud about that. So thank you, thank you teachers for everything that you do. Keep up the good work. So I do have four certificates on behalf of Assemblymember Mike Fong to Sonia Ayala, I think it's the Teacher of the Year. Can you see how it is? Robert Leonard, I think he's next, right? Relax, relax. Congratulations. Thank you for your hard work. Annette Felix? Mr. Wong, come back up. The legend, Mr. Wong, congratulations. So thank you and I hope everyone has a wonderful night. Oh, a picture? All right, thank you. Thank you, Felicidades.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, board members. Thank you, family and friends, for this very honorable occasion. Really wanted to echo a lot of the sentiments that I heard here tonight and really to Annette Felix, Felix, for your legacy. We heard many generations of great educators. You won't be the last. I think there's many educators in your family line, so we're really looking forward to seeing a lot of great success stories from them too. Oh, fantastic. I think you're too young to retire. I think you should come back and work for us. And we are looking for more park and rec folks to help us out, most definitely. And really to the board members, really, I think you guys, I think Board Member Kui said it best. It is a People's Choice Award tonight. So really wanted to thank you guys for recognizing a lot of great talent in your district. And really, Mr. Wong, thank you for your legacy. Me, myself, I was a graduate of Almani High School. Actually, I went to school with you, Mr. Superintendent. But at that time, it was just calculus AB and we had to, I had to take a bus to Río Hondo to take additional AP classes. But you bring that legacy, you bring that skill set, you bring that valuable resource that the district really needs, the student really needs. And you know, this arena is filled with students. It's really a testament of how well your leadership, school board leadership, has really created this learning environment. And then the students here are a testament, they're really here to show the support. So really thank you. With that said, I think I spoke too much and taken too much of your face time.
Not at all, not at all.
Let me go ahead and congratulate Ms. Annette Felix. Ms. Sonia Ayala. Thank you. Mr. Robert Leonard. And Mr. Tony Wong, of course. Tony? Can we get a great picture?
Absolutely, let's do the same thing. Come on, come on forward, same thing. Again, this is Councilman Sean Deng from the city of Rosemead. Again, this is Councilman Sean Deng from the City of Rosemead. Family, if her family can come on up. You want with the board, yes. Hold on for one minute, one with the board with Ms. Felix, yes. And I apologize that we went a little bit out of order. Some of the elected officials have another meeting to get to and so did Mauricio, Assemblyman Mike Fong's field representative. So, I apologize for a little bit of the order. But yes, Ms. Felix with the board. While they're taking the picture, I do want to announce that we're gonna have a little reception, a little celebration. So, if you could just hold tight, we got one more teacher. Then we have the boys and girls state that we want to recognize. And then we're gonna go into a little reception and celebrate. So, thank you for being patient. It always takes a while to recognize people, but that's what we're all about, recognizing people. It doesn't matter how long it takes, it needs to be done. And it's the fun part of our board meetings. The rest of the stuff is dry and boring, but this is the fun stuff. Thank you, another round of applause for Ms. Annette Felix. Next, ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to recognize another exceptional teacher in our school district. This is Mr. Mr. Bob Leonard. And I'll allow Dr. Edward Zuniga to say a few words about him. Exceptional teacher from Fernando Ladesma High School. I'm so proud of this educator, just a classy man, just like all of our other awardees. Come on up, Mr. Leonard. Go right ahead, Dr. Zuniga.
All right, this gentleman is no secret to Fernando R. Ladesma High School, our continuation high school. But we don't call it a continuation high school because it is a high school for all. And if you haven't been onto the campus, I invite you to come by Fernando Ladesma and the magic that happens every day there, too. Especially because they have educators like Mr. Leonard. A little bit about history with Mr. Leonard. He has only been at Fernando R. Ladesma with the exception of helping out the adult school once in a while. I know he has done that in his career as well. But he started his career at the adult school on September 1st, 1989, at Fernando Ladesma High School. And he also has taught, as I mentioned, at the Almani Rosemead Adult School, too. I was introduced to Mr. Leonard while I was actually visiting Ladesma High School myself, though I never had the opportunity to work with him. I have heard of him prior to actually meeting him. That's because of the things that I would say best describe him as whatever happens in that classroom, something's going on, there's learning happening every day in there. Because when you step into the classroom, our students are engaged, our students are introduced to technology, our students are speaking to Mr. Leonard, there's communication happening. All the, all the forces that we're committed to, that we're communicating, and also critical thinking and collaborating, that is what's happening in Mr. Leonard's class, too. And for that reason, he is being recognized today, too, because the impact that he has on our students, that we call really the most that I need, the support so they can return back to their high school or finish high school successfully at Fernando R. Ladesma High School. One of the things also that Mr. Leonard has impressed us is that he not only just stays in that classroom, kids are either in his classroom during lunchtime as well, or he's outside engaging with students during activities, during back-to-school night, writing the yearbook for how many years now, Mr. Leonard, supporting that? Thirty years, is contributing to the actual yearbook and the history that Fernando R. Ladesma once by Lindo High School. You know, it's because this gentleman that has recorded several, several great moments at Ladesma High School throughout the years, too. So, all his contributions around the inside of the classroom, as well as the instructional side, as well as the extracurricular, co-curricular. And because of him also, Fernando Ladesma has a program for students, after-school programming, during the school time, before school. He's just a great contributor and a proud, really, employee of Fernando R. Ladesma High School, Almani Union High School District as well. I want to invite Mr. Arteaga up here, his principal, and our principal of Fernando Ladesma High School, who he has had the pleasure to work with him directly every day. And I know that he relies heavily on him to support our students on campus. So, Mr. Arteaga.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga, for having me up here. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Wong, always heard great things about you. Ms. Annette Felix, just letting you know, your husband has been a great supporter of our school for many years and myself. And I have the pleasure of working with Sonia Ayala, welcome to the club, Sonia. Really quick, Dr. Zuniga asked me to do this fairly quickly, but I can't because the most important things are students, teachers, and parents in our community. So, I gotta make it a little fun, Bob, okay? I started thinking about the history of Bob. He was raised in Almani. And then I started going over the places that he's been, where he went to school. And I started thinking, wow, we have a lot of things in common, Bob. So, let's go over some of the things we have in common. We both love teaching and we both love the Almani community, that's great. Both of our parents are immigrants, your dad immigrated from Hungary, correct? His parents immigrated from Hungary. Okay, my parents are immigrants, right? You went to Frank Wright from K to eighth grade, right? Mahal Frank Wright, I graduated Frank Wright, he graduated Frank Wright. Bob was a class of 77 from Royal, I graduated 87 from Royal. Bob went to Cal Poly Pomona and graduated there. I went to Cal Poly Pomona and graduated there. And then I've spent all of my career at Fernando Ladesma. Bob has spent all his career at Fernando Ladesma. And your wife is from Zacatecas, right, Alvida? I'm from Zacatecas, so that means both of your bosses are from Zacatecas. But that's where the comparison's kind of end. Because Bob is, he's a civil engineer, no, electrical engineer. Electrical engineer, I did not become an engineer. Electronic engineer, right? His wife is a civil engineer. My wife is not a civil engineer. His son is also an electrical engineer. Ryan, you're in here somewhere, right? My son is not an electrical engineer. And your daughter is a computer science engineer. My daughter is not a computer science engineer. So, pretty much, that's where the comparison's end. But Dr. Zuniga kind of summed it up, but I did want to say a little bit more is that Bob has 37-plus years at Fernando Ladesma. Bob is the remaining teacher in our district when Valley Lindo, our continuation, was at where South Almani stands now, and South Almani's going through its renovation. Bob was a math teacher at our site that was taken down to build South Almani, he was already there. How many years ago, Bob? I know. Bob and I love to joke around, he falls for it every time. But anyways, but what I do want to say about Bob is that his passion for teaching, his love and his passion for teaching. This is where you get to make fun of me now because I can't read this, I need glasses, now, Bob. Bob and I have a great time making fun of each other every day. Mr. Leonard has a love and passion for teaching. When you walk into his classroom, you walk into a classroom where kids are smiling, they rediscover their love for mathematics, it's a creative place and a place where technology is mastered, but pencil and paper and old-school ways are still emphasized. Bob's classroom is just amazing. About like 10 years ago, I had a presentation, we had a presentation, math presentation that Royal did, and they showed all these great DVD videos that they were recording. And I was thinking to myself as I was sitting there, Bob did that 15 years ago with VHS. He had done it the old-school way. But that's how dedicated he was to his classroom. But most important about Bob is that we call him the Energizer Bunny. He is super, super consistent, and I'll let you know about that consistency right now. And he is passionate about what he does. And there's no doubt, when you go in his classrooms, it is a place that kids love to be, they love to learn. And the difference is, Mr. Wong, who I've heard amazing things about, is teaching our students that are high achievers. Bob Leonard is teaching our at-promise students who have failed at all the comprehensive high schools and have lost their love for mathematics, completely the opposite, but I'll get back to that right now. His work ethic, his work ethic is tremendous. Bob, our Energizer Bunny, gets to work every morning between 6:00 AM and 6:30 AM, no later than 6:30 AM. He teaches from bell to bell, works through his lunch tutoring students all the time. If they're not in there, he's outside helping us and talking about teaching constantly during lunchtime. Always available for his colleagues and willing to share his practice to anybody who is willing to listen. I believe he's the only teacher in the district that has a video camera recording him every class session, and he welcomes that. So, any of you can log into his class and see what he's doing at any time. He is recording himself all the time and makes it available. Dr. Zuniga can log in and check in, he's got that on his desktop. He is willing to push the limits of rigor to our students and to their capabilities. His rigor and the stress that he puts on students during finals is pretty fun to see, even though the students are very stressed out. But he never fails, he always rewards them with donuts. Most important, he teaches as if his, as if his own kids were in the classroom at all times, and this is the beauty of it. Just recently, we had another, as each year passes by, we are getting more and more alumni that are very accomplished, and Mr. Leonard is a very big part of that in so many ways. Recently, we had Xenia Bautista come thank Bob for many, for many things he's done, especially her rediscovering her love for math. She went to Mount SAC, I think she came from Royal High School, no, Mountain View High School. Mountain View High School, went to Mount SAC, graduated from Mount SAC, went to UCLA and graduated and got her bachelor's in computer engineering and now works for SpaceX. She's an aerospace engineer, right? You can look her up on our website. Same thing recently with Edgar Acevedo, came by to our school to thank us and to see Mr. Leonard because he went to contractor school, what are the schools we talked about recently, just trade school? And he's also become an engineer and also works for SpaceX. And the funny thing, Xenia and Edgar don't know each other. So, we actually have a couple of students who have become engineers, all right? Many of the students learned to believe in themselves and develop a love for learning and mathematics because of the impact Bob has in our mathematics department. Bob is also very passionate about supporting our school and moving us forward. He is also our graphics teacher and has produced years and years of yearbook. Overall, Mr. Leonard has been a big part and a tremendous, a big part of our tremendous success at Fernando Ladesma High School. And to me, Bob, you're a great friend, which makes me wonder sometimes, because would a great friend encourage you to ride up the mountain five to six miles on a mountain bike and fly back down it and you forget to tell us that the trails are only about two feet wide and there's 10-foot drops? Right? So, I wonder sometimes if you're really my friend. But at the end of those rides, when I'm dead, he always takes me out for a hot dog and a beverage. And by the way, I'd like to see all the people here who Bob is taking mountain bike riding. Can you all please stand as family? Can everybody please stand who's gone mountain biking with Bob? All right, raise your hand. Yeah, you guys know what I'm talking about. So, thank you, Bob, you're well-deserving, you represent Fernando Ladesma great, you've represented our school district great in our city, and the school would not be where it'd be if it wasn't for your energy and your passion for students and supporting our administration. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate Mr. Mr. Arteaga sharing all of that information. I'm so excited, I forgot his name. Mr. Arteaga, thank you so much. That must have taken hours for you to come up with all of those, all of those things that connect you. I really, really appreciate you sharing all that. It's okay if it takes us long, this is what is important to us and to the board. Mr. Leonard, the Board of Education from the Almani Union High School District hereby gives you the certificate of recognition for your outstanding contributions to our students and the entire school community at Fernando R. Ladesma High School. Just an amazing high school. I visit there very often and I will put up our Fernando Ladesma High School up against any school in California. I really mean that. Through your hard work, enthusiasm, and compassion, you have made a profound impact on the lives of our students, inspiring them to reach their full potential. Your current professionalism as an educator have enriched our entire school community, and we are grateful for the positive difference you make every day. Congratulations on behalf of the Almani Union High School District Board of Education. We hereby present you with the certificate and our very special lapel pin. At this time, I'll like, I'll share my, invite my colleagues to share a few, a few words. Go ahead, Vice President, Mr. Kui Wen.
You know, I don't know where to begin. 20 months ago, when I first became board member, I came to his school, his classroom, he texted me right away. And he, you know, let me have a pep talk with his student so I can see how passionate he is. Just recently, just last week, I and Dr. Zuniga, Mr. Arteaga went to different classrooms in Ladesma. I tried to prove to Dr. Zuniga, maybe they already know, but I want to prove it to everybody that, you know, I do the short survey, those kids that are taking your class. How do you feel about Mr. Leonard? Oh, he's great, but he's tough. You know, he's great, but he's tough, right? I didn't do the survey in your class, but I did the survey in the different classroom to show Dr. Zuniga and Dr. Arteaga, you're a great person. When we told you that we were to recognize you, and you're so humble, and it touched me that, oh, there's all the teachers that are more deserving than me, yeah, let's just have all the teachers recognized. But remember, this is a student choice award, you cannot avoid it, okay? So, you know, it's obvious, it's not recommended by your principal, it's by your student, I keep it over and over. The subject you're teaching is easy to learn, but it's the most difficult to teach. You know why? Because most of the students come in either below grade level or at promise. And how to deliver your knowledge to them is a big deal. During the last summer, when I interviewed with the calculus teacher, they told me, they so blessed because those students already filter out, they're ready to move out. So, all they can do, how to achieve greatness to the next level. But your job is a most challenging job, I can see it. You know, I saw your grading every paper, you know, so deep, you give them partial credit. In order to do that, you spend a lot of time, like he say, you come in 6 o'clock, you grade your paper, and that speaks volume of your character, your passion, your passion about teaching. You know, we're all engineers, so that's why we talk the same language. So, that's why, you know, and I really appreciate so much. And, you know, the student feels so belonging to your class, even, you know, you know that, but, you know, like I say, I just want to prove it to Dr. Zuniga and, you know, your principal. I do survey in front of them and they told me, who's taking your class? And they raise their hand and I ask them how they feel belonging, how you learn, and so on and so. So, this is a student choice award, so you deserve it, and I really appreciate your contribution.
Mr. Arteaga, you left me with no talking because you said everything about this wonderful Mr. Bob. Now I understand why, when you go to Fernando Ladesma, you feel so cozy, so nice and so kind as soon as he, as you see him. And, well, I can tell you, even the cat loves him, the owner, the cat is the owner. Have you ever been in Fernando Ladesma? There is a cat who is the owner of everything. He, that cat, he loves him more than any other man. Congratulations.
Yeah, he's just giving me flashbacks of Ferny.
He's just giving me flashbacks of Ferny, Ferny the cat. So I first knew about Mr. Leonard about 20 years ago. I just joined the board and we were, correct me if I'm wrong, we still had bungalows there and we were building the high school. And I went to visit with Mr. Ogas, right? And, but the point being that there are very few educators that we connect with one sight. When you say Ladesma, when you say a royal, certain people come to mind and it's not many, but Mr. Leonard is one of them that when you mention Valleylindo or Fernando Ladesma, people think about you. You know, you mentioned one thing, you know, that your wife is from Zacatecas. You know, my wife is from Zacatecas, so that makes us family. So prima, prima. So because I don't know, for whatever reason, when I see, you know, I speak to my wife, they're like, oh, they're from Zacatecas. They're related to blah, blah, blah. So we have to be related now, so primo, you know? But yeah, so one of the things that Mr. Nguyen said about the subject matter is easy, but it's hard to teach. But I know that what Mr. Leonard does is build relationships with students. And a lot of the educators at our schools do that. But one of the best is Mr. Leonard. And when you do that, it does become a lot easier. So we, I'm so happy that we're recognizing you for your talents, for what you do to our kids, for our kids. And I just wanted to thank you personally. Thank you.
I really don't know what else to say. Mr. Salcedo took my knowing you for 20 years part already because you and I both started with this district around the same time. We met you around the same time. I don't think I knew somebody who was as big an advocate for Fernando Ladesma or Valleylindo High School then as you. When we were in those, and I say we, because for a period of time, I had the pleasure of working directly with Mr. Leonard as a tech specialist there at Ladesma while he was a teacher technology leader. And you know, whatever his teachers needed, whatever his students needed, he demanded it. And he would go and talk to Mr. Morris, he would talk to Mr. Kine, he would talk to Mr. Artiaga, whoever was the principal at the time, whoever had the, was holding the purse strings, whatever he needed, he would go and advocate. And more likely than not, Bob got it. Because it wasn't something that he was advocating for for himself. It was for his teachers, it was for his students. And if that meant that I had to show up on a Friday afternoon after everyone had gone home with another tech and pull tiles off of those bungalows and fling wire through false ceilings and get fiberglass all over me, you know, it had to happen because we were going to do whatever Bob wanted. Make sure that the students got what they needed and the faculty got what they needed as well. And Bob, you've been the biggest advocate for Fernando Ladesma. And I'm really glad to know that you're here, that you're part of our family. And I think this speaks really highly of you, the fact that you've had the same teacher's aid for as far back as I can remember. Tony's been there with you this entire time, as far as I can remember. Not a whole lot of teachers can say that. And so I think that speaks to who you are as a person and the type of people that you attract, you know? And then the extra efforts that you put in at Ladesma. You know, being the yearbook advisor for 30 years now, more than 30 years? Every event at Ladesma, there's one thing that is certain. Bob Leonard's gonna be running around with a camera, documenting every single thing on that campus. But it's people like Bob, people like you, who dedicate your lives to our students. And that's what makes me so happy to be here as part of Almonte Union High School District. Every day that I'm on a campus and I get to see the wonderful work that you and your colleagues do. When I'm at Ladesma and I get to pop my head into your classroom and say hi, or when we're at graduation and you're there taking photos of all the graduates, you know, to record that moment for them. That means a lot, not only for us, but also for them. Thank you for your dedication to Ladesma, to our students. It just speaks volumes about you. And the last thing I want to say, I'm not from Zacatecas, but my family is from Jalisco, don't hold that against me. But we are just on the other side of the mountain from Temasian. So very much familia as well. Thank you to your family who's here today. I know it's been a long evening, but I want to make sure that they get the recognition that they deserve for allowing you to be part of our family when you're not with them. Congratulations.
I haven't been around, it's on. I haven't been around for 30, 40 years, but from what I hear, that seems like a great time to, the VHS, the big tapes, the big CDs.
She's like, what is VHS?
No, no, I know what it is. But I think that's amazing that you've not only been there for Fernando Ladesma, but the school it was before, very much before. And how you insisted on like board members, your school officials to come and fix a problem for the students, for their classroom in order to have a more proper and more prestigious education. And I think that's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you. I'm honored. I'd like to thank the board, Fred, my family. If my family could stand up. My son, Ryan, my wife, Elvira, my daughter-in-law, Grace, my granddaughter, Maya, Desiree, my sister-in-law, Irma, and her boyfriend, Gabe. Just an FYI, everyone who stood up, except my granddaughter, is an engineer. I'm the only one in the family who is not. I do have an engineering degree, but many years ago, I had a job offer from Lockheed and I decided to go to Europe instead. When I came back, it wasn't available. I needed to eat. So I got a substitute teaching job in the district. I ended up at what was then called Valleylindo. And I never left. I've been there ever since. And it was, my advisor, when I was doing my credential, asked me what I thought of the place. And I didn't really know what the question or where it was coming from. So I kind of asked her what she was getting at. And she told me that continuation high schools in most districts are considered the district's best kept secret. And we at Fernando R. Ladesma truly are the district's best kept secret. For years, kids would come to our school and they would tell me that their teachers were afraid that they were coming to our school because Valleylindo had quite a reputation. And even though I worked at Valleylindo many years ago, trust me, it was a little bit of the Wild West, but not quite what most people were saying about it. If you come there today, it is a very different place. Extremely, I'm going to use the words of a new teacher we just got back. He was at another school for 13 years. Used to be with us before, but he's back with us now as our science teacher. And the one thing he can't stop talking about is how professional our school is. The way teachers conduct themselves, the admin, the students. If you've never been to a continuation high school, you really should come down and take a look and see what we do. As Fred pointed out, we should have done this a long time ago, but we're doing it now. We are now trying to find all of our alumni that have gone on to do great things. So if you look at our website and you go to the student tab and you go down at the bottom, you will see a tab called Fernando R. Ladesma High School Alumni. So last week, Friday, Xenia came by and I had her immediately write a bio directly onto our website. She worked at SpaceX. She doesn't work there now. She works for a smaller aerospace company, but she has worked for SpaceX. She graduated from us, went to Mount SAC, and then later went to UCLA and graduated, as Fred pointed out, in computer science and, computer science and engineering, which is a combined major at UCLA. And he's doing great. We do have, to my knowledge, I can think of four or five engineers that have come from our school. Fred can tell you, I think we've had a few lawyers, a few kids in the medical profession, lots of teachers, our counselor. And we need to put Angelica on our alumni sheet.
We have a long list, we're gonna count it.
But we are doing that. Again, I don't want to keep you guys here any longer because it's been a long, long time. And when my family comes, what do they always want to do at the end? They want to go eat. I know. Again, thank you and I'm honored to be here.
You're welcome, Mr. Leonard. Let's go ahead and take a picture here with the board.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Thank you so much. Okay, now, can we move the agenda?
We're gonna go back up. This is our Teacher of the Year. This is, when did Mr. Qui, Mr. Qui announced it as like the Oscar of the awards? We have a recognition for our Teacher of the Year to Ms. Sonia Ayala from South Del Monte High School. Yes, come on up. Come on up. Awesome. Thank you, come on up. We save the best for last here, that's right. So I know that Dr. Zuniga, I'm not sure where he went. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to him to share a few things about Ms. Sonia. And then we'll invite the principal, Dr. Jorge Morales, to also come on up. Dr. Edward Zuniga, Superintendent of the Almonte Union High School District.
Thank you, Board President Padilla. And I promise you, try to be brief. I also invited our principal from South Del Monte High School, Dr. Jorge Morales, who is going to really tell just a little bit more about what Sonia Ayala, really what she, her impact that she has had at South Almonte High School. But before he does that, I really want to share that Ms. Ayala is one of the first teachers that was hired at South Almonte High School, believe it or not, back in 1992, the year that the school opened up. So what you're seeing is South Almonte High School, really from the history, day one, to what we have today in 2024. And her story began a long time ago as an educator. Even as a child, her inspiration and her mentors from Montebello High School, where she spoke kindly about and passionate about, which really infused her interest into becoming a teacher. And to be named Teacher of the Year, folks, think about that. We have over 400 educators in our district. And to be selected one of the many in our district, it's a prestigious honor, probably the highest honor to receive as an educator in this district. And I do want to recognize Ms. Ayala, not only as my colleague, but also someone who also showed me the ropes as an administrator. And I shared that with our entire faculty at the first day of school welcome back, when we met with all our teachers. I said, if it wasn't for Ms. Ayala, my first administrative job probably wouldn't have been successful because she not only supported me as a new assistant principal, but also understood my role and the important impact that I would have at South Almonte High School if I was successful too. And what she did is what she does in the classroom, that if she teaches the kids to work hard and what we call tough love, those kids are going to be successful and go on to be successful like we have our educator presented a while ago about the students at Fernando Ladesma with Mr. Bob Leonard featuring that too. And it's true that these educators tonight are the cream of the crop of all of our educators too. Just like our students this evening that are waiting patiently are the cream and of crop of our students population that we're going to recognize in a few seconds too. And at this time, I would like to recognize our, again, our principal, Dr. Jorge Morales, to say a few more kind words about Ms. Ayala, our Teacher of the Year.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Oscars. Now we present the Almonte Union High School District Teacher of the Year Award. Anyhow, just having some fun here now. Thank you guys again. South Del Monte High School, we do have a presentation or a quick speech here, but the students came out to join our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Ayala. They are exceptional students on campus, student leaders, and that's really what makes our job successful. With that said, I've engaged them now to have a little piece of the actual speech that we were going to share from Ms. Ayala, from our school's perspective, okay? Here we do have two sets of twins, okay? Two different families that they were expected to be home by seven, but the riot outside is still waiting and then we still have cake, alright? And then a few more students here for us. So with that said, oh, back to my digital. Alright, let's kick it off straight here. Good evening, Almonte Union High School District Board President and Trustees, Cabinet and Community. My name is Jorge Morales and I'm the proud principal of South Almonte High School. Why am I so proud again? Is that every day I get an opportunity to work with exceptional educators as Ms. Ayala, but also the student body that keeps on coming and takes pride in our school. I do have now Malina, who is going to go ahead and share her part of the speech.
I'm Malina and I am honored to introduce Ms. Sonia Ayala as the 2024 EMHSD Teacher of the Year. Ms. Ayala, a dedicated educator, coach, mentor and a leader at South Almonte High School. She has been a pillar of our community for over 33 years.
As a founding teacher and staff member at our school, Ms. Ayala has continuously demonstrated her unwavering commitment to our students' success and our school's growth. Recently, Ms. Ayala served as the WASC, Western Association of Schools and Colleges, Chairperson for our formal accreditation visit. Her deep institutional knowledge and insight were invaluable in guiding our school through an evaluation of both our strengths and areas of growth. Her leadership has not, oh, oopsie, her leadership, her leadership. Okay. Her leadership not only encouraged our staff to reflect on our mission, every student a success story, but also ensured that we remain focused on improving educational services and supporting every student's path to success. And she's an awesome coach, but don't be fooled, a tough one.
We've surveyed our staff and students to nominate as well as select our recommendation for Teacher of the Year. Ms. Ayala's contributions have stood out to all of the staff members and students who chose to recognize her tonight as she truly does her best to go above and beyond to serve our school and encourage those to strive for greater lengths.
Her ability to mentor colleagues, her leadership on campus and her relentless pursuit of excellence in both teaching and learning make her a shining example of what it means to be an educator for our district. Her passion for lifelong learning and her dedication for making South Del Monte High School a place where students thrive are evident in everything she does.
So thank you very much, Ally. Thank you. A round of applause for Ally, yes. Senior Class President, Harin. We also have Malina, Melina. Switch, Melina, Malina, Melina, Melina, Melina. Alright, here we go. Alexa, Alyssa, I'm sorry, and then Alexa, and then of course, Malena. Okay, so thank you guys again for sharing your part of the speech here. And I close it off simply by saying, Ms. Ayala, congratulations on being named the 2024 Almonte Union High School District Teacher of the Year as your former instructional aide back in 1993 and now your partner in.
but also ensured that we remain focused on improving educational services and supporting every student's path to success. And she's an awesome coach, but don't be fooled, a tough one.
We've surveyed our staff and students to nominate, as well as select our recommendation for Teacher of the Year. Ms. Ayala's contributions have stood out to all of the staff members and students who chose to recognize her tonight, as she truly does her best to go above and beyond to serve our school and encourage those to strive for greater lengths.
Her ability to mentor colleagues, her leadership on campus, and her relentless pursuit of excellence in both teaching and learning make her a shining example of what it means to be an educator for our district. Her passion for lifelong learning and her dedication for making South Almonte High School a place where students thrive are evident in everything she does.
So thank you very much, Ally. Thank you. A round of applause for Ally, yes. Senior Class President, Harin. We also have Malina. Melina. Switch, Melina, Malina, Melina. Melina, Melina. All right, here we go. Alexa, Alyssa, I'm sorry, and then Alexa, and then of course, Malena. Okay, so thank you guys again for sharing your part of the speech here, and I close it off simply by saying, Ms. Ayala, congratulations on being named the 2024 Almonte Union High School District Teacher of the Year. As your former instructional aide back in 1993, and now your partner in school leadership, I am deeply grateful for your continued leadership, your unwavering commitment to our students, and for always striving to make our school not just good, but great. So congratulations, Ms. Ayala, again, on behalf of South Almonte High School, the staff. We've been partying with her already. So a lot of this stuff has already been covered. So thank you so much, Ms. Ayala, again.
Thank you, Dr. Morales. On behalf of the Board of Education from the Almonte Union High School District, we hereby present the certificate of recognition to the star of the night, Sonia Ayala, for being selected as the Almonte Union High School District 2425 Teacher of the Year. Your outstanding contributions to South Almonte High School are truly commendable. Your exceptional dedication and tireless efforts to inspire students have set a shining example for both your peers and the entire school community. Your passion for teaching and commitment to students' success have a lasting impact, have made a lasting impact, and for this, you are truly deserving of this distinguished honor. Congratulations from the Almonte Union High School District Board of Trustees, and we also have our special lapel pin. In addition to that, Ms. Ayala's picture will also be displayed here at our district office, her picture, and it will be inscribed in this plaque so that future generations can see and learn about this special educator in our school district that we're so proud to recognize tonight. Vice President, take it away.
I had the honor to attend the Teacher of the Year Award banquet at Universal Hilton. For me, I think she have double awards. She get the Oscar and also People's Choice Award. So you're a double whammer. So congratulations on your dedication to Almonte Union High School District. And you know, we're so proud of you, you know, for what you've been doing so far. And you know, it's our pride. Okay, you are our valuable asset. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Ayala, I have never seen such enthusiasm of so many students. The first day when we have our meeting in Rosemead High School, and my goodness, your students, it was a bunch of students yelling and screaming. And I said, what's happening here? And they said, because she's our best teacher. And I was so proud to have the honor of meet you and to have lunch with you, and congratulated for being such a great teacher and for love our students. You are going to get this, and I want you to remember this. This is going to be your award, that you can have it and remember how much you have been giving to our students, how much our students love you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Mr. Carlos Elsido.
Mr. Briones just wants to go last all the time. It's all right. Oh, now, huh? So the very first time I met Ms. Ayala, I don't even think I was a board member. I was helping my brother because he was coaching track, right? And it was during a track meet. And I know somebody said tough love. There's no joke. I remember, you know, kids were, you know, in a line. They were doing what Ms. Ayala said because y'all know, right? Yeah, see, they all shake their head. Is this your daughter? Of course, spitting image, right? Tough love, tough love at home? But all that to say, you know, there was some tough love. If you mentored Dr. Zuniga, look where he ended up. If you, if Mr., Dr., don't start. Oh, Mr., there you are. I was looking over here where you normally are. Dr. Morales is now the principal, and you were her aide. Look where he ended up. So y'all are in good hands, and we expect great things from all of you. So. Ah, the. Yeah, there we go. Yeah. So tough love is because she cares and she loves what she does, and she wants to see all of you succeed and to just max out on your potential. That's the reason, and that's the reason why these people are so successful. So thank you for what you do. Thank you for that tough love. We know where it's coming from, and we need more people like you. So thank you so much.
I don't have any fun stories to share. Not that there aren't a lot, I just, everything has been said. And Mr. Elsido just said something right now that we need more Sonia Ayalas in the world. I want to point out one thing. There are thousands of teachers here in LA County. There are hundreds of teachers here in the Almonte Union High School District, but there's only one Sonia Ayala. And you're very deserving of your Teacher of the Year Award and recognition. Congratulations, Sonia.
Hi, Ms. Ayalita. I'm glad to have known you, thankfully not as a teacher. PE scares me. But as a coach, and she pushed me through cross-country, and I think that was amazing. It made me like running, in a sense. I love the races with her. I love just going into her office and bothering her, peeking my head and like, hi, Ayalita, you need something? And she'll just let me be there. During track and field, when she let me be her little assistant, take notes, we would like to see the people racing, and she'd be like, this is how you're supposed to be running. Look, that's not, that's not it. And I was like, oh, okay, miss. And she's like, no, no, I only say this because, because I care. And I was like, well, I could tell. And things like during football, football. No, it's not football. What's that sport? Softball. No, not softball. Bas, no. Baseball, oh my. Baseball, when, last year, we would have those conversations just right there, seeing a game. I think those are precious moments I've shared with you, Ms. Ayala. Congratulations.
Thank you, yes. And now, the main person gets the final word. Congratulations, Ms. Ayala.
Thank you, board members. Thank you, district staff that know me. And thank you to my administration, former administration. I see a couple of former teachers from South Almonte that have moved on. And my students, they know it is tough love. And I want to let you all know that although I did grow up at Montebello, graduated from there, I thought I would be returning to teach there, but of course, they didn't hire me. I came here to the Almonte District, and it became my home. I really, really enjoy working here for the students that I work for at South Almonte, but I know it's the bigger community, and it's Almonte, South Almonte altogether. Even Rosemead connects there. I have connection there because I went to Muscatell Junior High. So somehow, I made it back home here to the Almonte Union High School District, and I truly believe that this is my second home. Thank you.
You're welcome. And too bad for Montebello and good for us because we hired an amazing teacher. Another round of applause for Ms. Sonia Ayala. Another round of applause for Ms. Sonia Ayala. Yes. And again, we just have one more recognition, which will be our Boys and Girls State. We'll do that, and then we'll go ahead and have some cake and some finger foods. And again, you know, I know it's a long night, but it's a special night. Thank you for being patient.
Oh, yeah. One more picture.
And Board President, I just wanted to ask Dr. Lynn. Now, with that said, we do have a football game tomorrow night. She is our athletic director as well. So the power vested in me by the Board of Education, Ms. Ayala, I do say that tomorrow, I can cover your morning class because we're here so late, okay? So you're allowed to miss first period only tomorrow. I will cover you, okay?
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
Talking about mental health, social health, wellness.
Thank you. Another round of applause for our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Sonia Ayala. We'll get back to the agenda. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and recognize our Girls and Boys State young people that we want to recognize. It says, "Recognition of the American Legion California Boys and Girls State Delegates for 2024." And for that, I'd like to invite the Honorable Mr. David Seigres to come on up. Come on up, yes.
In the interest of time, I will preface what the delegates to Boys State, Girls State have said. They've said it's a life-changing experience for the better. They learned how to be leaders. They have self-confidence, and I'll call the names. Probably some of them will not be here. Jasper Lee, Katherine Long. Andy Trong. Danelli Cobian. Jonathan Phan. Ophelia Musser. Jacob Smith. Vincent Kwan. Brayden Fong. Juan Manuel Palastina. Alice Sar. Richard Chang. And Preston Nguyen. They have all agreed that the Board of Education here, their principals, assistant principals deserve their gratitude for having supported them. These are the outstanding 11th graders from their high schools. One request I get every year from the Boys State people, and now it's Boys State, Girls State, is send us more delegates like you send. Because they're always outstanding. They work together. They don't give up. They even ask for more work. So somehow, they work around this during the summer even, believe it or not. And it's very difficult for the principals and assistant principals to select from the 11th grade. Because think how many students are at each high school, yet they are selecting delegates who are, well, first they're candidates, then they're interviewed. And is Mr. Cuevas here? The record has been set by Almonte High School. They sent five delegates. No one has ever done that before. And I wish to mention something that I inherited the position of Boys State Chairman, now it's Boys State, Girls State Chairman, from a wonderful teacher from the district, Mr. McFann, who told me, we need someone to do it. And I said, why me? He said, you? Why not you? You can do it, I'll train you. And he did. So they deserve your applause because, believe me, they went through a rigorous program to be trained in government, leadership, and the rest. So they are wonderful students, and they have a great future for them. In closing, I will say the most well-known graduate nationally from our program, President Bill Clinton, who came home and told his mom he was gonna be president. She said, son, there's no way you can do this. He said, mom, I learned how to do it. And also, this board has been so supportive. And our Superintendent, Dr. Zuniga, an alum from there, has always supported. And also, our board member, Florencia Briones, I understand he even went as a counselor in the city. And that's difficult to do that. I did it also for 10 days by myself. And you work with 50 delegates together, and you plan and you make sure they show up, which they do. So again, thank you so much to this district for your support.
Absolutely. I want to give a lot of credit also to all of the administrators. I know how much work you guys put in. I see Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. I see Mr. David Seigres. And they're calling you guys like, hey, we need your applications, we need all that. Let's give a round of applause for all of the principals and the vice principals who get all of this done.
And the most important people are the families of these delegates. Thank you, families.
And thank you. I know that it's been a long night. Thank you for summing it up exactly what they do. But I'm still gonna call out the names, just, I'm gonna just announce the names just to kind of move us along so we could get to a little celebration. If I call a student and the student's not here, I would like to ask the principal to come on up and get the award. Ophelia Musser. Congratulations, okay? They also get a special pin like all of our recognitions that we've had tonight. Vincent Kwan. Jacob Smith. Danelli Cobian. Jasper Lee. Katherine Long. Jonathan Phan. Andy Trong. Brayden Fong. Congratulations. Richard Chang. RHS, Rosemead. Preston Nguyen. Rosemead High. Alice Sar. Rosemead High School. Juan Palastina. Congratulations. And you know, I forgot to say their high school, so I'm gonna allow each one of them to say what high school they represent. This is your time to share. Again, give us your name and what high school you're from.
My name is Vincent, and I go to a Royal High School.
My name is Jacob Smith, and I go to a Royal High School.
My name's Katherine Long, and I go to Almonte High School.
My name is Jasper, and I go to Almonte High School.
My name's Jonathan, and I go to Almonte High School too.
My name is Andy, and I go to Almonte High School too.
My name is Danelli, and I also go to Almonte High School.
My name's Ophelia Musser, and I go to a Royal High School.
My name is Brayden Fong, I go to Mountview High School.
My name is Juan Palastina, and I'm from South Almonte High School. Go Eagles!
Awesome, awesome. So again, congratulations to all of our students. I'll go ahead and speak on behalf of our entire Board of Education from the Almonte Union High School District. We could not be prouder of all of you students that are here. You make us very proud, and when the Honorable Mr. David Seigres comes back and tells us what other people that don't work in our district say about you, that makes us as board members feel very special, that they want more students like ours. Thank you for representing all of our student body in our district in such an amazing way. We're extremely proud of you, and also to all the families. A big round of applause to all the mothers, fathers, all the families that are here. Congratulations again. Anything else you'd like to say, Mr. David Seigres? Final words?
I believe this is being livestreamed and archived so you can go back and see yourselves on the internet. so you can go back and see yourselves on the internet.
That's right, that's right. So let's come forward and take a picture together, all the students with the Board of Education. And then we'll take one without the board so that we can post this on our district website. Okay, if the Board can step to the side, and principals, get up here too. If your students are up here, I would like the principals up there so we could post it on our website, district website. If the Board can step out, principals. Another round of applause for the American Legion California Boys and Girls State Delegates for 2024. We are so proud of you. Excellent. One last round of applause. So as they're taking pictures there with the students, we're going to go ahead and take a 12-minute recess, okay? 12-minute recess. Come on over and share with some of the food and drinks that we have, okay? Thank you so much. 12-minute recess. If you could all join us over here, please, on the lobby area. We have some refreshments and snacks for everybody. Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. At this time, we are on the agenda. Item B, B as in boy, and...
Public comment.
Yes, we're going to move on to public comment. That's item B12, public comments. Dr. Edward Zuniga, do you have any public comment cards tonight?
There are no public comments for CD.
Hearing no public comments, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, B13. Communication from Union Representatives of EMUEA, better known as Almani Union Educators Association. Do we have anybody here from EMUEA? Hearing none, I'll move over to CSEA, the California School Employees Association. Do we have a representative from CSEA? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We are on item C. C is in Charlie, oral and written communications. Item number one. I hereby open the public hearing notice for resolution on sufficiency of instructional materials for the 2024-2025 school year. Dr. Edward Zuniga, Superintendent.
Yes, Board President. But you have this opportunity for the Board, I'm sorry, the public to address the Board regarding any insufficiencies that we have with the instructional materials. Our district has met all sufficient instructional materials at our school sites that have been visited thus far. So we want to make sure that the public is informed, but also have the opportunity for the public to provide comment if they wish to.
Thank you, Dr. Edward Zuniga. Is there any member of the public who would like to address item C1, the public hearing for the resolution on sufficiency of instructional materials for the 2024-2025 school year? Hearing none, I hereby close the public hearing at 8:24 PM. Moving on to item C2. C2, C S N Charlie, Board and Superintendent Announcement and Communications. We'll start off with Board Member, Mr. Carlos Alcedo. Any Board communications you'd like to share?
Yes, I wasn't here at the special meeting. I wasn't feeling too well. So I have some things I wanted just to report on. I was able to make it out to Mr. Flores. There you are. Royal held the college fair this time on their campus, and I wanted to applaud the setup and just the spacious routes that we had. And it was a warm day. But being that it was spread out, just made it a little bit more comfortable. We also had a back-to-school night at La Desma, where I got to meet Fernie. But it was nice to... But it was nice to get out there to La Desma and just, it's always nice to just... They hired the staff and, you know, they feel so much like family and the students and families that that go to back-to-school night or the various events. It's always a very joyous occasion. So it was nice to spend some time there and get a hot dog and a Diet Coke, so thank you so much. And then the ribbon cutting that we had last week was was very special for a number of occasions, for a number of reasons. Not only just celebrating everything that was going on at South Almonte with Dr. Morales, but also back-to-school night. So it was nice to see the large amount of parents there. Excited to meet teachers and having their children walk them around. And then I also just wanted to remind everybody that Saturday is the annual Children's Day Parade. I typically go early because I walk with my students, but I also stick around to hear our bands. So that's always one of my favorite parts of the day is just listening to all of our different bands that show up and and the parents that is line the sides of the street waiting for their children from Arroyo and El Monte and South Almonte come by. And you can always tell who the families are, so Children's Day Parade starts at 10:00, so hope to see everybody there. That's all I got.
Thank you, Board Member Carlos Salcedo. I appreciate you getting out to all these schools, and it shows what you do for the children of the Almonte Union High School District. We appreciate it. Board Member, Mr. Florencio Briones.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Just a few items to report out tonight. So last month, I unfortunately missed the Rosemead High School back-to-school night, so apologies to Mrs. Ellen Nitro and the faculty on campus, but for good reason. That evening, I attended at Mount SAC a special event hosted by the Gilbert and Jackie Sisneros Foundation with social media influencers Irvin Garcia Riel and Alexis Aleman, two students currently in their third year at UCLA Medical School. They're known as the Fools in Medicine, and they shared their journey, discussed their admissions process and the realities of med school, highlighted the importance of representation in healthcare, and it really put on a great presentation to the students that were in attendance there as well as the community members. I want to give a special thank you to Dr. Zuniga, who ensured that the students from, that students from Almonte High School and Arroyo High School were able to attend the event. The foundation did provide transportation, so I wanted to extend a special thank you to the Sisneros Foundation for doing that. And also thank you to Ms. Witt and the avid staff from Arroyo High School for chaperoning the students that were there. All in all, it was a really great event to hear from these two young men and their journey through med school at UCLA. Next up, I did, we did recognize Miss Sonia Yalla earlier this evening, but on the 20th, I did attend the LA County Teacher of the Year Luncheon in Universal City. And Ms. Yalla was one of, I think, sixty-four, sixty-four teachers from throughout LA County that were recognized as Teachers of the Year. It was a really wonderful event, and I was able to spend some time with some of my colleagues as well as staff from South Almonte High School, Dr. Zuniga and Ms. Yalla and her family. So it was a really nice event. And then last week, I had the opportunity to return to Hacienda La Puente Unified School District to see their youth court in action. This was part of the California School Board Association Golden Bell Award submission. And so the youth court is, it's an alternative to suspension for middle school students and high school students there at Hacienda La Puente Unified School District. So I was able to sit in on one of the cases in the youth court, hear from the students, their parent, as well as jurors, and the judge, that is one of the school principals, hear the case, and then finally render a verdict and a disposition. So it's a really fascinating program that provides a school district an alternative to suspending students. And I did get to meet a couple of students who have previously gone through the youth court, who are now part of the program either as jurors or in one case as a bailiff. It was a really great program, and I do look forward to talking to the staff there a little bit more to get more insight on the program and discuss a little bit more about its effectiveness. But more importantly, to see if they need additional support to create a a teen court within the Hacienda La Puente Unified School District that would provide that service to the Superior Court here in the San Gabriel Valley. Right now, the closest teen court is located in Downey, which is kind of a ways from here. And so the school district has applied to the Superior Court to have a teen court in this area. And they're still waiting on a response from Superior Court, but it looks like if they're able to host something there within the district, it would be beneficial not only to their students, but also students throughout the valley, including our own, who, you know, are justice-involved but don't go through or wouldn't go normally through the traditional Superior Court system, but instead would go through the teen court. Those two items I wanted to share out. Last week, I did have the opportunity to attend South Almonte High School's ribbon-cutting ceremony and back-to-school night. It was a wonderful event. Happy to see that our construction projects are moving forward, and some of them are now coming to their conclusion. Obviously, there's still some work to be done, and, you know, folks are very understanding and being very flexible, and I do appreciate that. But thank you, Dr. Morales, and to your faculty and staff who were there for back-to-school night. Had a wonderful time speaking to teachers, dropping into classrooms and watching them present to parents and students and engage with them. So please share my thanks with your, with your staff and your faculty. And lastly, on Saturday, I had the privilege of attending Pasadena City College's Centennial Celebration, hence the party hat here. PCC turns 100 years old this year of serving the, the community, including our own district here. I want to extend a very special thank you to the Board of Trustees and their President and Superintendent, Dr. Gomez, for the invitation. They gave us the opportunity to present our certificate on behalf of the board. Thank you to my colleagues who were able to attend. And it was great to, to engage with some of their, their faculty who were there on campus, celebrating along with everyone else. I had a really nice conversation with Dr. Laura Ramírez, who was previously with Rio Hondo and is now with PCC. And we had really good conversation about, you know, what needs our students have that ultimately become their students. But we also had an opportunity to just talk as individuals and share stories about, you know, growing older and taking care of our own families and our parents, and she shared a couple of things that really opened my eyes to what it may be like dealing with a parent who's aging. So it was really nice to, to be able to be in an environment where it wasn't such a formal setting, and it was very much a relaxed setting, a very celebratory setting. And lastly, I did speak to a couple of their trustees, trustee Sandra Chenlao and Tammy Silver, and now retired trustee John Martin. And they were very excited about returning to Rosemead. They discussed the purchase of the property across the street from our property there on Bentel. You know, they're gonna be breaking ground there. And one of the things that Mr. Martin shared was what he really would like to see is for that to become a hub between our district and PCC, really an adult education hub. And I think ultimately that was the idea that we all, yeah, that we all wanted, that adult education complex. So I'm really looking forward to them having their groundbreaking and ultimately the ribbon cutting so that we can continue to partner with them so that students who go to MRAS and maybe complete their high school diploma through the program there can then just walk across the street and continue their education at Pasadena City College. So all in all, it was a really beautiful event. It was great to be part of that. You know, it's always nice to be on the campus, having spent so many years there as a student myself. But it was just really great. And one last I do want to share, and this talks to the community that we have here. The day of, I was not wearing a suit because it was 90 degrees on a Saturday outdoors. So I was wearing a button-up, but I had my placard on, the large placard, like the one Mr. Nguyen has on his jacket right now. And right before I left, I went over to one of the poster boards to take one last photo, and a woman walked up to me, and she got very close. She was wearing a mask, I couldn't see her face, she got very close. And I didn't know what was going on, and she says, "I made that." And I looked at her, I said, "Excuse me," she says, she points to my placard, and she says, "I made that." I said, "You did?" She's like, "Yeah, that's from Vena Engraving." And I took it off, and I looked at the back, and sure enough, it says Vena Engraving. Well, I didn't catch her last name, but her name is Van. She's one of the owners. Her and her husband own the company in San Gabriel. She is a Pasadena City College alum, and as it turns out, she just graduated from Cal Poly Pomona this May, as I did. Same day, different department, business versus history. It was just one of those things where it's such a small world, you run into someone, and she told me, she's like, "I recognized it." She's like, "I don't always know the names, I don't always know the customers, but I recognize our work." And so I wanted to come up and see it and confirm that that was our, our work, and it was. And so anyway, I thanked her for all the work that she does, and she thanked us for the business. But it was just, you know, one of those things where you make that connection, and it's really nice to run into someone like that. So with that, thank you, Mr. Padilla, for the opportunity to report out.
Absolutely. Thank you, Board Member, Mr. Florencio Briones. Board Member, Mr. Qui Nguyen. What have you done for the children of the Almonte Union High School District?
I just want to say I sent a picture and video clip. Mr. Stillman, please, can I have a clicker? Or you do it yourself?
Next slide, please.
Okay, first of all, that's the Rosie back-to-school night. Look at it, you know, that's a welcoming gate when you come in. It's all the cheerleading, the cheer team, you know, welcoming all the guests. You know, this is something, and it's a beautiful scene, you know. We don't have time, so skip that next one.
That sounds like Luis Miguel welcoming everybody at Rosemead High School right there.
I know Luis Miguel. Next one. See, when you enter, people through there, and, you know, people feel welcoming right away. You can see even me, you know, can come with me, and they say, "Oh, wow." That's what amazing welcoming team that, you know, makes them feel so good. The drum team, the cheerleader team. Next, please. And this is, you know, we wanted a picture where the foreign interpreter, Ms. Maria Montano interprets Spanish. Ms. Mei Chang speaking, I think Mandarin, and I don't know, the Mandarin was interpreting Vietnamese, and I don't know what the other names, Cantonese. I couldn't remember names. They, they translated to foreign language simultaneously. And, you know, the parent feels so welcome, feels so respected, so feel included. So, you know, that's the best thing I ever seen for a long, long time. Next, please. I say the picture worth a thousand words, that's why. No, this is, it's a Yalla, just a video clip on Rosemead.
Come on, you're the technology guy. Make it work. You don't have enough memory on that computer? Come on, man. It's not working.
Okay, not working. Now, skip this, it's Teacher of the Year Award, where Mr. Yalla and her family, and this is a wonderful event. And we went with Mr. Briones and Professor Estelle de Secret and Dr. Zuniga and, and Dr. Kuko Gassian and a lot of, you know, you know, people from our district, you know, and it's an honor to, you know, to be there with her and to recognize then what she have achieved so far. Next, please. And that, you know, us, you know, that's a whole, you know, Almonte Union High School District and, you know, administrator and her family. Next, please. And this is when we do the, from South Almonte, right? I guess the South Almonte. Yeah, it's a South Almonte. We do the school side visit at South Almonte, and we went there early and I, and I, and you know, the thing I noticed, the tardiness still there, but improved so much. Improved so much, but it's still work to be worked on. Me and, you know, Dr. Morales still, you know, see those students coming late and so on and so. But, but it's improved so much from the last time I saw. And this is the parent center, where parents learn the technology, you know, and they learn how to use Google Map and Google Photo and how to communicate because we all use Google Chrome, and that's very good. You see how crowded it is? It's filled, and that, that's the wonderful thing I seen, parent involvement, and you know, at your school. Next, please. This one, you know what it is? That's the, the monitor, bathroom monitor pass. So anybody go to bathroom that have expired pass, we have a campus supervisor. You know, I went there with Cindy Wu from Mountain View, Mountain View School District because she want to know how her kid is performing at South Almonte High School. So, you know, I was with her, you know, and these, you know, the campus supervisor monitor, you know, who go into bathroom has a pass that been expired, so it's displayed right in front of bathroom. So that's very good. Next, please. And that's, that's another picture of the student, minimum parents, you know, learning technology. Next, please. And this is, you know, I have an honor to go to the grand opening of, you know, of the, they call floor and wall covering in Walnut. We have a lot of dignitary from state level, city level, and these are owner and the treasurer, Fiona Mas. She asked me to take a picture with her. That's the owner, is Simon Song. And behind it is a wall covering made of rock, recycled rock with no, zero carbon footprint. They very popular in Dubai and in Europe, and they tried to get a footprint in America. I think they would be very successful. And that, the treasurer, Fiona Ma. Next, please. And this is, you know, we present the recognition of the grand opening. It's in the city of Walnut. And, you know, we have Walnut Mayor Victor Chan and, you know, all the dignitary and, you know, a lot, a lot of dignitary. Next, please. And this is where we present, you know, the recognition, certificate of recognition for their company just established. I represent the Almonte Union High School District. By the way, I was granted an interview with the, with the Asian newspaper, you know, they asked some question, and I told them at Almonte Union High School District, we embrace DEI. That mean, it answer all the question, diversity, equity, inclusion. They have very controversial question. They want to pose me, to get me into trouble, but I tell them, we, we embrace everything. You know, the diversity, equity, and, you know, without getting specific subject. Next one, please. And this is Almonte High School, you know, ribbon cutting recently.
South Almonte.
South Almonte, South Almonte, I mean, and, you know, and it's a wonderful event, you know, I'm so proud, you know, of what the district have done for the for the, for the school, the renovation, the modernization. It looks beautiful, you know. Next, please. And this, you know, next please, with all the board over there, this ribbon cutting from South Almonte with all the, you know, administrator and board member. Next, please. Next. So this is the State of Almonte City. You know, we had, I did not go stay for the back-to-school night at South Almonte because we all go to Almonte State of a City speech. You know, we want to find out because, you know, 60%, 70% of our student come from Almonte. And we need to know what going on with Almonte and what kind of development, what kind of structure, you know, that they have. And it's, I mean, it's very, it's very promising, you know, a lot of thing going around, you know, and it's a wonderful event, but, you know, there's some, you know, problem, but it's okay. Next, please. And this is Mayor Ancona, and this is former principal of Muscatel, Ms. Don Rock, now she running for the city of Monterey Park, a councilwoman. Next, please. Oh, this is, this is Mr. Padilla playing basketball at Pasadena 100th Year Birthday, you know, with, you know, his It's, it's season hot, and they had to play it. I think, you know, I say, "It's so hot, I don't know if I can stand out."
I'm too fat now.
Next, please. Yeah, this is 100th Year Pasadena City College. It's a wonderful event. It's so crowded, you know, we so proud of Pasadena City College. What they contribute to community, you know, not only to our school district, but to the community. They have created so many opportunity for people who going to succeed. So we there, you know, to present our, you know, our certificate of recognition with the Mr. Briones and, you know, that is all board over there. Next, please. Look who turned 100. So, next, please. And that's cake cutting with Dr. Gomez, Alton Wong, you know, the board president, and, you know, a lot of dignitary, Ryan Liu, and some senator, you know, I don't, we can't even remember. All of them are like Judy Chu and so on and so, so many. Okay, next, please. And that's the cake cutting also. You know, all the recognition. You know, all the recognition. And that's it. And yesterday, I mean, not yesterday, we went to a Royal High School visit. And we, I visited IM One classroom. Most of the classroom, they only have twelve to fifteen student. And I appreciate what the district did for IM One to support the math. All I can say is teacher, the ball is in your court. We did whatever we can to support you. Some of them are very engaging, but some of them need improvement. But like I say, the ball in your court. We do what we can to support you on the math initiative. You know, I know we're willing to go extra mile to support you to make sure our kid are served properly and educated properly. That's all I can say. The equity inequity is still there, but we need to work on it harder. And few days before, I went to, uh, for Daniel Ledesma with Dr. Zuniga also on the school side visit. I do a lot of random survey. I do school visit not to look good, not to just observe. I talk to student. Asked Dr. Zuniga, I went to one of the classroom in, um, South Almonte, the teacher teaching IM One. I randomly asked the IM One student, what school they coming from? What grade they getting? How they feel connected to your, to their student? And that teacher all get four on the scale from four to five. How you rate it, you know, your connection with your teacher? How you feel belonging to the classroom? Dr. Zuniga was there and Dr. Morales was there. And that teacher get a four or five and it happened to be a coach, right? And it show right away, you know, when you walk in the classroom, it show right away. I walk in the classroom not to be looking good, you know, to, to, we need to talk to kid. You need to talk to how they feel about a teacher, how they get connected to teacher. But once they get connected, it's very easy to educate them. And that's why the B, I just told President Padilla, add a B on the DEI. D E I B, you know, make sure the kid belong to the classroom, feel belong it, you know. Otherwise, it's impossible to teach them. The reason Mr. Ledesma is successful because the kid all want to belong to in the classroom. You know, you ask them, you want to go back to comprehensive high school? They know, they don't want to, they want to be there. The only two place, I mean, Mr. Catalina, you know, I, I, if I'm not mistaken, I read her report. You know, she point out the same thing. And, you know, and it, and that's why I already, you know, I already told, you know, the audience that what I did and, you know, and it, it is fact that, you know, belonging and the dedication of teacher have everything to do with the kid performance. And, you know, the only two places they found belonging is Ms. Frog, uh, Almonte, uh, you know, Rosemead, Almonte Adult School and for Daniel Ledesma. That's the only thing that noticeable to me. Kid want to be there, student want to be there, student are grateful, embraced. That's why, you know, when I do interview with all the student, you know, before people come in, I already know exactly what happening. So that, that's, that's very, you know, commendable at that time. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, uh, Board Member, Mr. Qui Win. You've been busy. Thank you for what you do for the children of the Almonte Union High School District. I appreciate it. And yes, you know, like Brene Brown says, sometimes you need to lean into the discomfort. Thank you. Board Member, Professor Stella Torres de Segris, what have you done for the children of the Almonte Union High School District?
Well, I can say that we're repeating several things that my colleagues did, like Back to School Night. Each high school has a special characteristic in doing something really good for the parents and the students. I am so glad and so happy all the Back to School Night that I've been attending. Very happy to talk with the parents, the students, they are very enthusiastic. And one characteristic very special that it has, um, uh, Rosemead is the five languages. Well, everybody knows that I'm a linguist and for me, it has a beautiful impact in myself when I see this great idea of speaking in the different languages, in the languages of each one of the students that are attending there. And the parents were so happy, so, um, uh, giving thanks to the principal for paying attention to this, this to be so delicate, so nice and so kind. That is really wonderful. And South Delmonte, wonderful too. The good environment, so nice, kind, all the time, very happy that Dr. Morales has his enthusiasm that he gives to the students, the students and the parents is something that we need that. We need that for continuing bringing the parents to our, uh, to our Back to School Night. Thank you very much for doing that. It was great and very happy attending to this Back to School Night. Um, I also attend the Teacher of the Year. Wonderful. Everybody, you see the pictures, but one of the things that I love to see is the, the book that they give us. I love to read what the phrase that a teacher, a student says about the Teacher of the Year. It was beautiful what they say about our Teacher of the Year. Really, you can see that that Teacher of the Year was corrected, correctly selected because she was that, she was nice, kind, kind and always taking care of what, what is the necessity of the student. And it's the truth. That's the reason that those students were so happy with her. The book is really very interesting. I love to read everything. And there were sixty phrases, really interesting. Um, I attended the Back to School, no, Homecoming Football in Rosemead. I was very happy. The presentation was so interesting. Everybody was so happy and the principal and the, and the assistant principals, they were working really hard. But it had a great success. Everybody was happy. We enjoy a lot being there, even when we didn't win. We, we have big problems, but it was very, very interesting, the homecoming. Thank you very much for doing that and preparing to attend to the other high schools, the homecoming. I love to go to the football and see how everybody is working there in the homecoming. Finally, we have already started with our program, um, the Girl State Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Five. I send the letters to each one of my, the principals. Thank you very much. I get your answers and we're going to work. We're going to have another meeting next month, next week, next week. And our high schools are already registered. And I am very excited in meeting the twenty-five new candidates that we have for Girl State. Still, Girl State is, uh, is only for girls. It's not the other program. The program that we have tonight is another program totally different from us. This year, as I told you, is going to start on Saturday, June fourteenth, um, twenty twenty-five. And it's going to end in, um, Thursday, June nineteenth. I don't know exactly what they did that, but it was because we need to have the university for us. And of course, I will keep, they give you the information of what we are doing. Also, I am very happy, uh, to have, I was very happy to have the interview with, uh, our students. Twenty-five students from Elmonte Union High School that they attend for the confirmation class at Nativity Church. I've been a, I've been a catechist for Nativity Church during thirty-three years. I've been very happy to see how the students that they go to the confirmation class, most of them, they are from Arroyo, El Monte, Mountain View, Fernando Ledesma. And those students, they are, I'm very happy to see them, how enthusiasm they have in studying. They are really happy talking when we have our break and we talk about how they are doing the high school. I see them that outside of the high school, they are really very happy talking about the, the high school. Uh, another part that I want, I want to tell you is about that I attend to them, the, you see the picture, the State of the City. Our city, we need to know more how our city is doing. All the province that we have, we have a lot of province, but please, one of the things that we have to try to do is to try to help as much as we can to make the city better, better. Um, one thing that I did also while I attend them, Wings Program. Saturday, Saturday at seven o'clock, I was in Duarte High School representing Elmonte Union High School. Because we have thirty girls, thirty of our girls were there with Senator Rubio and she was very happy. She knew that it was going to be impossible to have because we, I know, she told me, I know that you, you are very busy. Your high school is very busy, but you, we sent thirty girls. The program was, as always, beautiful. I was there only until ten thirty, but it was very, very interesting. Um, the girls have, uh, very, a very good speaker in the morning who was telling them the importance of always grow in yourselves. And this is very important to tell you that this month, the month of October is called the month of the domestic violence. Is the reason that I have this, this really pink here that is in, in purple color because we are living in a terrible world where the domestic violence is terrible. And we have to take care of that problem because our students are the ones who are suffering. The problems at home. Also, this month is the cancer, cancer, calling to the cancer to be very, very careful. And this is the pink, the pink, uh, ribbon that they want us in the women's club, MVPWU, to try to have it all the month and let know people the importance of be careful with this province because this province affect our children a lot. Well, finally, I attend my, my college, Pasadena City College, a hundred years. From those hundred years, I've been working there for thirty-three years. I remember when they have them, the seventy-five celebration. I just had two years of working there and we made a beautiful quilt with all the high schools. Oh, excuse me, with all the, the, um, all the classes that we were teaching in, at that time in our Pasadena City College. This year was totally different. It was very interesting. I was talking with, um, Candice, the super, the assistant superintendent. She was very happy to know that we were there. They were asking about you, Dr. Zuniga. And I said, well, probably it's going to be around here. I was talking also with our former, former, um, board, uh, former board member, Mr. Martin. I met him for a long time. He was, um, telling me that now they, they bought the other part of the, of the land and they are really going to have a big, big, uh, extension of Pasadena City College in Rosemead. And I said, well, I hope that you keep giving us very good service to our Elmonte Union High School District. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Board Member, Professor Stella Torres de Segris. Uh, Board Member, we have Board Member, um, Ms. Pablo.
Hello. Um, um, I also assisted various school events, like the Rosemead High Schools Back to School, Back to School Night, right? And their homecoming game, I really liked their homecoming game. It was really nice. I was with, um, my friend Alice Sar. She's amazing. She, she walked me around the, the area. I think it was a really nice community. And I know that they didn't have like last year's royalty, um, homecoming royalty, but rather, um, like from way back when, right? Um, as well as I'd like to again extend, um, the board an invitation to our next SAC meeting, October seventh. Yes, October seventh at Almonte High School. And, um, I think it's going to be a very interesting meeting. I know that there is a student that we might bring on, um, to our, to our meeting talking about a district-wide mentoring program that he would like to start. As well as things that I've seen throughout our schools, like the, the sports. I think they're starting off really strong. I know that, I think league sports just started as in like district-wide, our, our school league. And, um, I've, I've loved, I, I've seen the, the strong effort that the college and career centers at each school have been putting into their seniors this year. I, I see and feel the support from each and every one of those schools, um, as well as. Oh, I had some suggestions that just came up to mind. I know that with like applications for like seniors and stuff, um, is there a possibility that each, um, um, school principal could send like a list of what scholarships or what programs you guys have offering? And maybe us within SAC can work on a little, um, school website or a, or a bulletin board to be posted up for all students to be able to have access to. Um, I think that's all.
You mean like for scholarships?
Yeah. Because I know that, I know that schools have scholarships within their, within their schools, right? And, and at times, like you don't know it until it's due. You're like, oh, wow, like I had this easy money right here and I didn't know. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that would be pretty easy to do because we know who always gives the scholarships, you know, and, and having a list. And, uh, and, and certain special donors pick certain schools, like alumni, you know, certain, there's certain awards that are given to Almonte, certain for Mountain View. I, I think that's a great idea, so we will look into that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Board Member Pablo. Uh, Superintendent Dr. Edward Zuniga, go ahead and give your communication and then I'll close it up.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, uh, my presentation is short, but I did want to just give the board an update of some data, some data that we, um, have been tracking since the start of the school year. Last month, I shared with you some of the data related to attendance and enrollment. And I did have an update. Um, today is the official, uh, seat beds day, which is a measuring period, right? It's a very important day for us to make sure that, uh, uh, many students are accounted for, for enrollment. Uh, this is just a snapshot, really a clear view of where our students are, what our numbers are looking like right now. And this is every school listed or program listed on the left side. And then by grade level where our population is noted. Um, I do want to emphasize again, if you're looking at the twelfth grade and eleventh grade total enrollment, uh, and then you look over to your sophomores and freshmen, those ninth and tenth grade numbers are lower than your eleventh and twelfth grade enrollment. It's rare that we see this. Usually you have a larger freshman class, larger sophomore class. And then it starts, you know, as far as declining a little bit as you get into the eleventh and twelfth grade for whatever reason, uh, through attrition. But, um, what's alarming is that we've seen this, a two-year trend where we continue to see the ninth and tenth grade lower enrollment than the actual high school, eleventh and twelfth grade enrollment too. That's not a good sign. We're, we, we, what we're seeing is that the, the middle schools, elementary schools, their enrollment is also declining too. And we're, we're looking at that ninth and tenth grade, um, pretty alarming to see that when you compare to the senior class that's exiting out next year and how that will impact. So we're going to try to work with our middle schools to, as early as possible to determine what is the projected enrollment for our eighth graders coming into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, as I've been, uh, addressing with the board, the, the significant impact that declining enrollment has had on this district. And really, um, the ending of ESTRA funds, one-time fund that we have had that benefited learning loss and also including, uh, a number of, of temporary positions that have supported classroom instruction and obviously lowered down those classroom ratios as well too. Uh, so I did want to share that with you. Uh, you know, the current count is seventy-three eleven overall. Then we look at the, again, the comparison from the, um, uh, actual two-year comparison from last year. And then the bold one is the bottom of this year with the projected demographics that, from Davis demographics that we had at seventy-four, seventy-two. And then if you recall, on September fourth, I presented you the first numbers, we were at seventy-three oh seven. Well, you look at it, we only increased by four number, four, four students from one month. So really, this is, this is what we're going to see overall, the numbers what we're looking at now. Uh, and the difference from the projected to the actual seat bed state is negative one sixty-one still from what was projected. Okay, I did share with the board when you look at the, uh, E, um, ET, uh, as far as the equivalency for student teacher ratio. You know, that, that is about five, about five, at least five teachers that we're talking about there, somewhere around there, okay? And we're looking at that. And again, I noted the bottom where projections are assist the district in planning for the future and staffing needs, in particular, the classroom environments that we have. Um, here's a snapshot that I also shared with you last year with the grade period distribution for period one, semester one. So these are the first numbers that we saw last year, a year ago at this very board meeting. But I want to share that with you because they're looking at our focus on reducing DNF rates. Last year, we were at about nineteen point one percent combined DNF percentage rate of all. This is just a snapshot, right, guys? This is just more like all the grades can, uh, combined together what students earn from that first grading period, which is really an important part to the start of the school year. Fast forward today, this looks like, uh, the same. Fast forward today, this looks like the same basically graph that you're looking at, more of a pie chart now about the distribution and the number of DNF percentages. So the good news is that it did decline by one percent from last year's nineteen point one to eighteen point two percent this year. So that is, that is promising. Is it a lot? No, but a one percent, when you count over seventy-three hundred students, that does actually have an impact too. And not to say that the combined A and B also is also increased too. So that's good news. Then we look into just the two core, main core areas. I only put ELA today in math because at our next meeting, I'll present more details. Where, right now, what we're doing, because the grades were submitted yesterday afternoon, we have the wonderful Mr. Tim Wong, working with our Information Services and supported by Mr. Steelman, who assisted me in just getting this initial information to you this evening, but we can have something just to take a look at, kind of a snapshot of what you expect for the data that we'll most likely have in about a week or two, that I'll be sharing with the Board as well. By subgroup, by, you know, IM ones that we did look at last year, we want to track that down, but break it down by subject, by also grade level, and also by some key core areas that we're focusing on this year. But again, that's a snapshot for English Sandwich Arts. The percentage of DNF for English Sandwich Arts overall is twenty-two percent for DNF. And looking at the combined A, B, and C, D, you know, it's, it's something that we look at and say, okay, what does that mean, twenty-two percent, one out of every five kids are receiving a DNF in their English class too? So that also either a trend that we can see continue to thrive or continue to get support embedded during the instructional day after school to decline the DNF rate and get that lower. And in the math one, it does jump from twenty-two to ELA, and in math becomes thirty-two percent DNF, one out of every three kids receiving a DNF in their math class. So again, that's something that we continue to pay attention to and look at how we, what we have done, as Mr. Wen said, is we have done many things over the summer to support the entry-level math course of IM one. We do a headcount every time we walk into IM one class at every meeting, and Mr. Wen could attest to this when we do visit, even Mr. Briones, who has also joined us and walked through that, you know, we invested in that because we do feel that the connectedness to students and teachers would benefit that class size. But we also see, we also have to see results. We know that, you know, it's too premature right now of what that could, could, you know, mean in about a year or so, but we're hopeful that what we have done can support those teachers in continuing to instruct their students and have an impact and also a connectedness to those students as well. We know that's all relevant to the student success too. So that's really just a snapshot of what you expect in the next presentation with more breakdown about our total progress over the first grading period as well, okay? And I think that was it. I did want to share one, one important thing with you guys before I close it up. It's something that Mr. Flores, our Principal at Royal High School, shared with me recently. And really, I thought, it resonated with me because as a student athlete, when I was in high school, and I know some of you guys, how many guys played any sports in high school? Raise your hand. So there is a lot of you guys that would know what I'm talking about. When we talk about mental health awareness and mental health for our students, when we look at student athletes, we feel that, you know, that they're, they're good, they're involved, they're doing things, they're keeping busy, they're not the kids that are dealing with mental health. But in reality, the student athletes are dealing with a lot of pressure in keeping their grades up, but also the pressures of their parents and whether their community to do well in their sport, right? And that's something that I did feel as a young man too. But there is a, there is actually a, not only a program, but a foundation that recognizes October fifth through October twelve as a Student Athlete Mental Health Week. And I'd like to share this with all the schools because what, what was brought forward to us with the athletic trainer at a Royal High School, Mr. Brian Smith, and sharing that with the Principal, that our student athletes are good kids, but also there's some data that's relevant to what's happening with our student athletes. And I want to share that with you as well. So they're looking at, you know, the studies find that twenty-three point seven percent of athletes experience depressive symptoms that reach clinically relevant levels and six points three percent have moderate to severe depression. Even serious high school athletes have been found to struggle with their mental health, confirming that information. We look at the population of our students as well. Thirty-three percent of all students experience significant symptoms of depression. That's just everyone altogether, anxiety or mental health conditions. But among that group, thirty percent seek help, but our student athletes with their mental health conditions, only about ten percent seek support or help. Again, it's a stigma, it's a machismo, it's a stigma of being an athlete, being tough and sucking it up, and don't come to me with your problems as far as what's happening with you at home or at school on campus. And this foundation was brought forward by a family who lost their own son, who was an athlete, to suicide. And they are now encouraging all high schools, all colleges to support Student Athlete Mental Health Week, which runs again from October fifth through October twelve. And we'll be doing that with our Student Advisory Council, we'll be introducing that too. Remember that a lot of our kids play sport. We have multiple sports happening throughout the school year, year-round now too, as well. And again, I'm proud of our programs, but I also know that some students may be struggling and they're too either tough or feel that they could not go and seek help in dealing with their struggles as far as socio-emotional or anxiety, depression, et cetera. So I want to thank Mr. Flores for bringing this to my attention. That's how we share ideas at Almonte Union High School District, and we know that all of our high schools can benefit from this awareness that we also, you know, recognize mental health also, but in general, what about our student athletes too, that struggle sometimes that they may be too shy to discuss or bring forward? So on that note, I will end there, and I think you, Ms. Pablo handed you some items to promote, and that's part of the actual Student Athlete Mental Health Week. We'll also be recognizing that at our SAC meeting and maybe brainstorm about how do we promote that too.
I have a question for you, Dr. Zuniga.
Yes, sir.
On the math report, the first grading report?
Yes.
Did you say math? I mean, you combine all the math together or you break them to?
That is all math.
All math?
Because it's too early.
From what to what? IM one, IM two, IM three, pre-cow?
All math combined. What I'll be, what we'll be doing right now with Tim Wong is disaggregating all that data that we saw today into subgroups, into categories, by IM ones, by ninth grade, tenth grade. We probably will have that within a week or so, and then we'll be sharing that with the Board. I'll be providing that update as well with the Board too, once we get those, you know, why not, these are wrong numbers.
Yeah.
But I did want to just show a glimpse about what we, what we have, and then we'll get into the breakdown about our grades after.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
We're going to try to have this, with this symbol, with this awareness of the sports, the sports, how can I tell you? The sports in our students.
Awareness of the sport? I want to raise attention to this?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a great, great question. We want to raise attention. We also want to bring this to light all of our schools and perhaps do a campaign on the district side to, to show the support of our student athletes too.
Yes, it's very important.
This is new to me. I didn't even know we, there was something that existed that focused on the data about student athletes and how they struggle mentally as well and emotionally.
Yes. In Karuukut League, where my kids used to go to the sports all the year, they used to be all the time aware, but we didn't have this kind. We were only talking about it, to be aware, aware of our kids, to, to take care of themselves, that they don't have to feel the pressure so much. But it's a very good idea to have in our high schools, that we have so many sports.
Definitely.
To be awareness, yeah. Thank you.
And make it visible and aware for all of our student athletes too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Edward Zuniga. What have you done, Mr. Padilla, for the children of the Almonte Union High School District? I just want to give a shout out to all the high schools regarding the back-to-school nights and all the work and preparation that have gone into that. The College Fair at a Royal High School, it was great. Thank you so much for having multiple languages. I really appreciate that, and I always appreciate listening to Mr. Gabriel Flores speak Spanish. You know, it's well hidden in there, but I know you got it. All the Board members were talking about that, that, you know, you do a really good job, so kudos to you. Kudos to, I want to give kudos to Rio Hondo College and all of the resources that you had out there, very impressive. Also to Fernando R. Ledesma High School, always a classy back-to-school night. Thank you for feeding us, you know, we come out of our long workday and we go there and you have a meal ready for us and for the parents because the parents are also coming out of work and they get to visit their kids' classrooms and just a beautiful classy high school. Just thank you for your leadership. Shout out to the A Team, the Trades, the HVAC, Career Tech Education. I can't think of their names right now, but it's three of them with the letter A. And they, they were at every single back-to-school night that I saw in the Almonte Union High School District. That was very impressive because we know that not everybody wants to go to college. There are some of our students who want to pursue Career Tech Education, and more power to them. The ribbon cutting at South Almonte High School, Dr. Morales's school, very nice, beautiful campus, there's so much work there and, you know, the school has been around for so long. You remember, I graduated class of nineteen ninety-one from Rosemead High School and it opened in nineteen ninety-two, but all the work and reparations that have been going there and the beautiful courtyard with, with so much greener, greenery there and trees is, is pretty amazing. So kudos to the staff, you know, for putting up with all of the construction and so forth, just a classy event. To Ms. Salanietro at Rosemead High School, thank you, thank you, thank you, you know, a hundred and ten percent better. I remember that when Mr. Padilla threw a fit about, you know, only English being spoken there, you've gone above and beyond, you hit it out of the ballpark. We got every language represented there. And there is something powerful about, I know we have, you know, translator mechanisms or gadgets and stuff, but there's something very powerful when you hear your native language being spoken at the same level that English is being spoken to. And I'm, I'm very keen and pay a lot of attention to that. And the Asian families do go to Mr. Qui and tell him that, and then Latino families come and tell me and say, hey, nos gusta que están hablando español, que no nos están ignorando, que somos parte de esta comunidad. Thank you, Mr. Padilla. We like to hear our language represented. We like to be acknowledged and we do not like to be ignored, and we like to, we like to be made to feel that we are a part of this community. So Ms. Salanietro, you kicked some serious butt, your whole staff and, yes, it takes longer, but it's way more powerful that if we go all English really fast. It's like tonight, yeah, the recognitions take long, but all those people, we made a lot of people feel really good tonight, and they're going to go out and tell the whole world about the wonderful things that they've done and how we value them and recognize them. Same thing at back-to-school night, okay? So again, you know, speak the language of the people that you represent. It's very powerful and, you know, when we do the, the surveys, the student surveys that I brought years ago to this Board, I'm going blank, Youth Truth, you know, from the mouths of babes, they've tell you, they want relationships with their teachers. Parents are no different. They want relationships with their administrators and they want to be made to feel like they belong, like you respect them, like they're not just, you know, kind of coming by once and then never seeing them again. Thank you for building those positive relationships. I enjoyed going to Dr. Zuniga's SuperPAC, the Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee. Shout out to you, Dr. Zuniga, U-Connect. One thing that we do need to work on there is we need more Asian representation. It was nice to see our Tosa, Teacher on Special Assignment for English Language Learners at Rosemead, who's now a parent. She came, she is our only Asian parent there. We need to make that committee look like the ethnic makeup of the school district, and we got work to do in the Asian, on the Asian side of it. To Dr. Laura Arribas, thank you for delivering the report that you did on attendance. You did a phenomenal job of making sure that our parents understood everything about attendance and where we rank, where we've been, where we're going, where we're at. And I know that everybody's waiting, I'm waiting with anticipation to see our Month One, to see where we're going to start off and what we need to do to, to keep moving up, to get closer to that ninety-eight percent. Thank you to Ms. Aparicio at Rosemead High School for bringing so many resources over there. Please, Ms. Salanietro, let her know that I gave her a shout out. I appreciate all those community partners that came out. So many things here. I'm looking forward to the seventy-fifth Rosemead High School anniversary on October tenth, being Rosemead alumni and being President of the Board of Education. Yes, we can applaud that. I can't wait to celebrate seventy-five years of my alma mater. Had a great education there, built some amazing relationships, and I can't wait for that. And I'm glad that it's you, Ms. Salanietro, that will welcome all of alumni and anybody else who wants to come here and be a part of this great event. Also, on that same night, we also have another great event right after. Dr. Zuniga, the seventy-fifth anniversary for Rosemead High School is going to be at four o'clock or five o'clock?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, that's right. And after we attend there, the Board will also have the opportunity to come over to Almonte High School to experience a community concert through the School Yard Rap Company. This will be a community concert that we will provide to the entire community, and it is something that was requested by the parents of the SuperPAC. I go there to the SuperPAC, the Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee, and I say, this district will put its money where their mouth is. When parents speak in this district, we will listen to the things that they said. And they told me and they told Qui and they told Professor Stela Torres de Seigres, we've been through COVID, we lost a lot of family members, you know, sometimes our kids are very stressed out at the schools, they need something that is outside the box. So Dr. Zuniga and I listened and we worked together, collaborated with this company, and we did something that had never been done in this district, and that is to put on this, this performance, and I can't wait for that. So there's a lot of exciting stuff that is coming up. And Dr. Zuniga, I know that it took a lot of work, a lot of coordination. You and I and Mr. Qui and the parent, the SuperPAC have been planning this for about a year, about a year. And I'm glad that the parents have told me, and I say this, Mr. Padilla, no nos gusta asistir a comités donde mucho, mucho widi, widi, widi y poca acción. Translation, parents tell me, we don't like to be a part of committees where there's a whole lot of talk and not a whole lot of action, but we like to be at SuperPAC because stuff gets done. And I'll tell you, if you've never been to a SuperPAC, come check it out. It's a packed house. There isn't an empty seat in the, in the tables that they set up, and that's because of the leadership of, of Dr. Zuniga and the connection and the collaboration, communication, creativity, and the critical thinking that goes into the different events that get planned for our school district. Also, kudos to Echeverria. They talk about, they're anxiously waiting for the posada and the things that you're going to have planned for them, and I know that that's a lot of work that always falls on you and you end up making that all happen. Where is she at? Edith. Boom. Yeah, she sits very quietly over there. And you know, the parents, the truth be told, sometimes they say stuff they don't like and then they tell you what they want, and she makes it all happen because she's got to take the good, the bad, or the ugly, wrap it up and make it look good for showtime on the posada or the Asian event that we have, which is Chinese New Year, or I shouldn't say Chinese New Year, it's a lunar new year. I got checked for that by some of my colleagues, or some of my Asian friends that told me, don't call it that, you need to get with the program, Asian lunar year. I attended the State of the City, great job to Mayor Jessica Encona, she did a great job of presenting everything that's happening in the city. Yes, we've got issues and problems, but they're working hard, a lot of work being done on our roads to make our, our area safer. Probably one of the things that I really enjoyed is no longer, once they fix Five Points, you know that little dip on Garvey as you get into the, hop onto the freeway that a lot of us forget, and then you kind of wrap around and have to get onto the freeway? It will no longer be flooded, they're fixing that. So thank God. Enjoyed PCC one-hundredth anniversary. Thank you to Dr. Gomez, President Elton Wong, as well as Ryan Liu, who represents our city of Rosemead, I was here tonight. It was great, you saw the pictures, had a lot of fun. And also, I ran into a teacher from the time that I was at Rosemead High School, and it's a guy who stays active. His name is Mr. Crum. You know, I saw him, I'm like, hey, you look familiar, I said, were you a teacher at Rosemead? And he's like, yes, what's your name? And I'm like, I'm Mr. Padilla, Ricardo Padilla. And I go, you're Mr. Crum, right? He's like, yeah. So it was cool to see, it is a small world, like Mr. Briones was saying, and it's Mr. Duane Carlo Crum. And he was a teacher there back when I went there and graduated class of ninety-one, and he was there to celebrate the Pasadena birthday for one hundred years. So a lot of stuff going on, but that's my report. Thank you to all my colleagues for all that you guys do. I appreciate it when everybody shares, and you know me, I like to call out when somebody's up here and they don't do anything, I will call you out. But tonight, it's a good night. Next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda, we've got...
C.
Thank you for keeping me in line.
D.
D. Really quick, really quick, let me just, let me just ask, is anybody, are there any items that you would need on the consent agenda, Mr. Carlos Alcido?
No.
No, Mr. Florencio Breones?
No.
Mr. Qui Win?
No.
Professor Stella? And I have none. Can I get a motion to approve E Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Florencio Breones, can I get a second? Seconded by Mr. Carlos Alcido, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's covered. Come on up, item D, Information Presentation Math Update from our math consultant, Ms. Catalina Sines and Mr. Alejandro. Welcome, welcome. No.
That mic, that mic is like horrible, I hate that mic.
You need like a college degree to turn it on, I can never figure out how to turn Welcome, you guys, we are really looking forward to your math update. I know we've been a little quieter, silent in this area and as you can tell, we're still very interested in that, we've done so many things. Really quick, before you start your presentation, you know, I was trying to jot down, you know, because our math initiative is called Making A+ Adjustments to History, MATH, M-A-T-H, Making A+ Adjustments to History. And you know, just, I'm not a math teacher, but off the top of my head, I was like, you know, Mr. Padilla, why don't you write down some things that you know of some adjustments that we've made, but then ask the Assistant Supervet Services and Dr. Zuniga and you guys, what are some of the things that we have adjusted? And these are things that I wrote, but again, I'm not a math teacher, you know, I'm just a child welfare guy. So, this is what I wrote, the first big step we took is that we did an NWEA assessment, right, district wide, so that we could be common, because before, we were not common. You've heard me say that, you know, Rosemead had their thing, Arroyo had their thing, everybody had their thing going, but we needed one thing so that the board could be looking at one assessment. And you know, we didn't get it right the first time, when we piloted, we kind of, there was the Growth 6 Plus and then there was the I Am One, I Am Two, I Am Three Assessment and we realized, oh, that wasn't a smart thing to do, that was a silly one because we already knew our kids were low, so we were going to get that data. But then we learned that the one that would give us truer data was the Growth 6 Plus because then we could really see where the holes were. That's something that I learned along the way, but again, I'm just a little child welfare guy, I'm not a teacher, but we did that. Another adjustment that we did was through the visits that Mr. Qui Win did, we were just appalled that I Am One teachers and I Am Two teachers, no, even if the teacher was wonderful, you know, there wasn't enough teacher to go around in the amount of time that we had. So we were like, no, this is not okay, Dr. Zuniga, we were not okay with that, you need to look at these master schedules and lower the class sizes. So what did Dr. Zuniga do together with our Assistant Supervet Services? You all lowered the class sizes. That was another adjustment that we made and that's been, that's been good. How do I know? Because Dr., Dr., I call you Dr., Dr. Qui Millian in the math department goes and he's seen it and thank you for that, that was another A+ adjustment we made. We also have had discussions of the power standards and you guys stood to my face, you're moving too fast, slow down, slow down, slow down. I was kind of like, come on, man, I can put four teachers in a room, give them a week and they'll give me the power standards, but you shot back and said, no, 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 let's go slow and I said, okay, all right, I backed off and I'm waiting, I'm waiting to see when, how long it'll take to identify the power standards, but that was a thing we did. Then we started doing the parent talks, you were talking to the parents and to teach them how to make math goals, to ask, teach them how to ask questions of their math teachers and so on and so forth, educating our parents in English and Spanish, that was great, that was another adjustment that we made. How do I know? Because the parents in the SuperPAC come back and tell us, hey, nos gustan las platicas con la señorita Catalina Sines y nos estaban gustando, ya estamos aprendiendo más de la evaluación y cómo hacer preguntas. And yes, we like talking to Ms. Catalina Sines and the assessments and knowing what to ask. We also hired an outside consultant, right? So we expect you to tell us some things that we're doing right, where we need to grow, because we can't just pay you all this money and then, you know, not get anything out of it, you know, I expect to hear some words of wisdom. And then, I just put plugging the hole, but I was referring to the Growth 6 Plus. Those are just things that the child welfare person wrote. What are some other adjustments that we've made, just to throw it out there, so we're all starting with the same understanding before you get into the nitty gritty and give me, you know, give me the goods. What did I miss? What are some other adjustments that we've tweaked or we've done that we had not done in the past?
Well, first and foremost, good evening, Board President Ricardo Padilla, Superintendent Edward Zuniga, Dr. Edward Zuniga, Board Members and Cabinet. My name is Alex Sanchez, I'm the District Math TOSA, along here with Ms. Catalina Sines, Math Consultant for Prime Rational. Speaking to that, one of the...
Hold on, I forgot, and we hired a district TOSA in the area of math, my bad, I forgot you, so, yes.
You stole my thunder.
Yeah, sorry about that, man, go ahead.
We also brought in iXL. iXL is an adaptive tool that also has a diagnostic, it has skills from Kinder to Calculus, it's a great tool for in-classroom instruction, to support in-classroom instruction and also for intervention purposes as well. We've also implemented goal setting district-wide with all stakeholders, parents, leaders, teachers, we've included counselors, as bringing everybody and giving everybody some skin in the game and making it a team effort as opposed to just a math teacher effort to improve math achievement in the district.
Students too, yes, you mean student goals, yes.
And that's on top of all the things that you've already mentioned.
Great, great, okay, so we're all on the same page, we know that this is happening now, right? So now, give us the meat.
All right, let's get the show on the road, right, before these leaders run out on me. Okay. So I'm going to talk about NWA and our Fall Administration that was given out the first two weeks of school. We have data, so I'm going to talk about how we've been using that data, how we've been goal-setting with all stakeholders and what is the next step in this cycle of continuous improvement as we create systems to set all our stakeholders up for success. As Mr. Ricardo Padilla mentioned, we are using now the Growth 6 Plus test. The Growth 6 Plus has an English version and Spanish version. We were able to test all students in I Am One, I Am Two, I Am Three, including 11th graders without a math class and these numbers represent those students from those classes that I just mentioned. One of the things that I heard the board mention that they wanted to do is compare apples to apples, right, that was the big thing. So bringing in Growth 6 Plus and having all the schools administer it, we're able to now have comparisons from all the schools. I know some data has already been shared with you, but I wanted to focus on this data that includes the 9th graders because another request from the board, which I have heard, is that we want to see how prepared are our students when they're coming into our school district. And this report shows that and I'm going to provide some context so that we understand what exactly is the information that's being showed here in this report. So if you see the bar all the way up at the top, that is our percentile range for our students in the 9th grade who took the test, which was about 98% of our students, or 9th graders that took this assessment. It's broken up into percentile ranges from 1 to 99 and this is a report that compares students to other 9th graders just like them throughout the nation out of the 4,500 school districts that administer the NWA Assessment and the 13 million students that take it throughout the nation. So these are students that are compared to them just like them. And what's really powerful about this Growth 6 Plus and this report is that we're able to make projections from the 9th grade if students will be at a Level 3 or a Level 4 in the CASP by the 11th grade year. So NWA has a linking study where they were able to track and see how students were likely to perform on the CASP given their percentile range and the magic number here is 74th percentile. So if you have a student in the 74th percentile range, they're very likely to get a 3 or a 4 in the CASP. So looking at this report right here, we're actually able to see which students would fall under that. The green would represent the 61st through the 80th percentile and the blue would represent the 80th to the 99th percentile. Just for a baseline, the 50th percentile would be average. So that's essentially like, if we're looking at a bell-shaped curve, that would be where most of our students would kind of fall under. That's that yellow that you see there, that 21%. What's interesting also about this report is you can really see kind of like the wide array of abilities from our incoming 9th graders per school site, Per Arroyo, Almani, Mountain View, Rosemead, South Almani, we can see the highs of schools like Rosemead, the incoming 9th graders to the ones that are coming a little lower, less prepared, which is Mountain View High School. So we really get to compare, right, apples to apples. Another thing to take into consideration that's about this report is I was able to make a connection where if you add up the blue and the green from each of the schools that are shown here, they, those numbers very closely connect to our current CASP scores that we had from our students last year. With the exception of South Almani, that one's a little bit higher, but all the other schools correlate very closely to our current CASP scores for last year and also the ones that are in the preliminary data. So this gives us a good idea of which are students that we need to make sure we maintain within that 74th percentile range, but also gives you those students in the yellow, those are our high leverage students that could easily either go to orange or green depending on how we support them and prepare them. And given that these students are 9th graders, we have three years to be able to get them to that Level 3 and Level 4. Again, this is a similar dataset, this one specifically to students who are within that 74th percentile range for the 9th, 10th and 11th grade. The previous sites showed data from the greens, there were students that were in the 60th to the 80th percentile range, so a chunk of the green were part of that 74th percentile group that would be proficient in the CASP, Level 3 or Level 4. So this report gives you the actual students that we identified that were at the 74th percentile range in the fall when they took the NWA Assessment the first two weeks of school this school year.
Mr. Sanchez, I just wanted to add for a comment around Ds and Fs in math and how high they were and it was mentioned that one out of three students are getting Ds and Fs, just to point out that close to 80% of the students are coming to the district not proficiently at grade level. And if you look, about half of them are coming with a couple of years behind and so the one out of three Ds and Fs could also be because the students are coming not ready for the level that they're being taught at.
So that's the data, right, and the data's the data, so now, what are we doing with that data? So as the plan says, we're going to make adjustments to history. So one of the big things that we did this year was goal-setting and bringing all stakeholders into the conversation around the NWA data. This data was shared with teachers, it was shared with counselors, it was shared with students, it was shared with parents, it was shared with leadership. I've been going around to every single school and doing parent meetings to share the data with parents and families and Dr. Zuniga, I would invite you to ask your SuperPAC parents about the RIT scores and they can speak very intelligently on it, you know, some of them even came to two sessions, so they're very well-prepared and they understand the data and they understand how to read the reports now, which is great. I know it might not seem like a big number, 47, but last year it was zero, right? So we have growth, which we want to celebrate, same thing with the leaders and with our students, we have 3,536 students who were goal-setting around NWEA. They all got their student progress report, they looked at their data, they were having data chats with their teachers, they were setting goals, they were looking at barriers that they might have, they were looking how to overcome those barriers, they looked at what resources the school offered them so that they can reach their goals by the winter. So that was something that, you know, we haven't done, so it's a huge plus for us, a big celebration there.
Really quick, I have a question, so I get it that this is what you guys did for fall and I love it, you know, the fact that you just told the superintendent, asked, you know, some of the parents in our SuperPAC and I could tell they've been to some of those sessions because they've told me, they've said it, they're very vocal, they're very comfortable and just, you know, spew it all out. So when is the winter analysis or when are they going to, when are students or teachers or the school or the parents, when is the goal-setting going to happen for winter? When is that going to happen?
The, well, the initial testing is going to begin the first two weeks of school and come back from winter break, we're going to have the initial testing phase, it's two weeks. After those two weeks, we're going to take a week to dissegregate the data, create reports for all the school sites as well as for board members. The week following that, we're going to be meeting with leaders, then teachers, then parents.
Okay, so in terms of a timeline, this will happen like the third week in January, at the end of January? When are we going to?
I would say probably the end of January, early February at the latest.
Thank you.
So this is a typical report that everybody saw and I'm showing it to you all so that you guys are also in the loop because counselors saw it, students saw it, parents saw it, teachers, leaders, everyone, and every student, every of those 3,536 students received their own personal report so that they could take ownership of this data. So again, something new, we're having data chats with students and we're involving students in the data analysis process and bringing them in together, planning as a team member. So we showed them that the blue bar represents their RIT score, the yellow bar represents the national average and this number right here all the way to the right represents the percentile range. And I know it was mentioned last, last board meeting from the group at Mountain View that students were taking pictures of their RIT score at the end of the test and they were asking, hey, what does this mean, is this good or bad? Well, using the percentile range, we can show the students that, you know, depending on what your percentile range, determines how good your RIT score is. And pop quiz, I'm a teacher, right? What was the percentile range that we would want our students to achieve to get a Level 3 on the CASP? I said it earlier today, sorry, I'm a teacher, I have to ask. I want to make sure we're paying attention because that's really important.
Qui, I'm a child welfare guy, what's the answer to that question?
What was the percentile range that determines if a student will be receiving a 3 or 4 in the CASP?
What's the entire?
74%! Rosemead gets this one, no, thank you so much. No, I say that because that's a really important number, that's what we're goal-setting around. If we have 9th graders, we have three years to get them to that 74th percentile range. If we have sophomores, we have two years, if we have juniors, we have six months, right? So we have to plan accordingly to each age group so that we can get them as close as we can to that percentile range. Again, that's not the end-all, be-all, but it just shows that they're really understanding math and they're buying in to this process of the cycle of continuous improvement. So that percentile range is important and we told them that if your percentile range is below the 50th percentile, this goal probably wouldn't be a great goal because what NWA does, it creates a goal for students from fall to winter and fall to spring and typically it's a year's worth of learning, so this goal would be for about five months' worth of learning. And if you're a student that's three years behind, meeting that goal is not great, right? Because you're still three years behind, right? Your percentile range is not going to change. So we need to be more strategic and create more aggressive goals for a student like this who's at the 5th percentile range so that next time they take the test, the percentile range increases. So for this student, I would say maybe you want to double your goal, maybe even triple because it's kind of, it's pretty low. So we want to make sure that we're accelerating students' learning in the classroom. What's also great about the Growth 6 Plus is that it gives us quantile scores and those quantile scores are able to tell us what are the skills that our students are coming in with so that we can meet them at that zone of proximal development, right? We have to see what they know so that we can make connections to what we're teaching them in the classroom. So that's a really valuable tool is using those quantile scores and we shared this website with teachers called Lexile Hub. Lexile Hub allows you to... Lexile Hub allows you to input your quantile range for your class, and using that quantile range, you're able to see what skills are appropriate for you to teach in the classroom that are grade level and that are appropriate for the, your student's quantile range. It'll even recommend prerequisites so that you can create adaptive warm-ups so that you can make those connections from what your students, what you want your students to learn to what they already know, and meet them at that zone of proximal development, which is how how all learners learn. Another great resource is the integration of NWA with iXL. Again, something new, last year we didn't have this. This year, we're at, since we're using the Growth Six Plus test, we're actually able to take all the RIT scores for all the students in the district, upload them to iXL, and iXL will generate a customized individual study plan for each student that is at that zone of proximal development, that has those skills that that student is ready to learn so that they can practice those skills and ensure that they're going to grow next time they take the NWA assessment in the winter. And again, this was shared with parents, and and we told them that they can create goals with them around this study plan, teachers can create goals with students around this study plan. And again, it becomes very targeted and specific. You know, it's it's not, it's not as it might have been before where you ask a student, how are you going to improve in math? And the typical answer was, I'm just going to try harder, or I'm going to study. And it's like, well, study what? It's not very specific, it's not measurable, right? Not very attainable. This is specific, this is measurable, this is attainable, right? So this is something that the student can say, I'm going to work on on my study plan for ten minutes every day, or thirty minutes every day, or I'm going to complete one skill every day for my study plan. And if they do that, they will grow next time they take the NWEA assessment. Another awesome tool and resource that we have available for students is tutor.com. Tutor.com provides custom, well, custom, one-on-one tutoring for for students, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It is a very highly underutilized resource in our district, and we're currently working with the, with leaders to try to increase engagement in the, in this platform. Because again, it's not just for math, it's for all subjects. Students can get tutoring in ELA, they can get essay help, they can get AP help for their AP classes. They have AP study materials, and they cover all all levels of math, you know? I know sometimes I've heard that that maybe for the higher-level math students, they they have trouble getting help from tutors at at Prep, so they can use tutor.com. One of the things that that we've, I've also discussed with the the person who manages our account for tutor.com, Mr. Steven Tannen, he's willing to come to our schools and provide professional development. You know, it's part of our service that we pay for, so it doesn't cost us anything extra. They will come and train our teachers.
Who is that, who is that?
Steven Tannen.
Steven Tang?
Tannen. Yeah, he he was willing to come and and send representatives to teach our, to provide professional development for our teachers on how to use tutor.com so that we can have better implementation of this tool in the in the classroom, because it is a very powerful tool, being able to connect with an actual live person anytime during the day and get help on whatever it is that you're studying on.
I have a question.
Yes.
What happened to the M?
I know, Mr. Steelman. Just kidding, no, just kidding. No, I I, it was, I mean.
Next slide, please.
I I have it on my, on my slide thing, I don't know. Throw you under the bus. No, I'm just kidding, Mr. Steelman, you're the best. I, for, I don't know, I think it's just that same thing that was like buffering? It's still buffering, that's why. It'll, it'll, it'll show up eventually.
Hmm.
Okay, next slide. Okay, so next steps, right? What happens now? In the meantime, while we wait for the next testing cycle in in January, we're working on on bringing guarantee-in-viable curriculum. So we're prioritizing the standards. Work begins October fifteen through October thirty-first. We're going to be working with I Am One, I Am Two, and I Am Three teams, including the I Am One teachers from our feeder districts. They're going to be part of that PD, which is awesome. So we're going to have that vertical articulation happening across our our feeder districts, the schools in our feeder districts. We're making adjustments to the the math plan based on the stakeholders' voice. We're almost done meeting with all the the leadership teams. So once we're done that, we're going to make some adjustments and based on their needs. We're also going to talk about celebrations, right? We got to figure out how we're going to celebrate those students who are showing growth in in math throughout our district, and also meeting their goals. If we're having to meet their goals, we want to celebrate them meeting their goals. And then also providing iXL and tutor usage reports for the district. We did see an uptick in iXL usage after we showed that integration between NWA and iXL, a very drastic improvement. We're, I'd say about eighty, eighty-five percent of the the teachers in the district are now using iXL.
Big, big shout-out to teachers, you said eighty-five percent. Thank you so much, Almani Union High School District teachers. You know, I I want to acknowledge that, and I know that this was probably one of the toughest things that we brought to this, that this board made a decision on, but thank you, thank you, because that is going to be a question that I'm going to be asking in the visits that you guys have made, you know, throughout our school district. You know, what have been some of the impressions, or what what things have you seen? Because one thing, if I walk in, or Mr. Qui walks in, or a board member, but what are some of the impressions that you guys have from those walkthroughs with administrators and and implementing all these things that we have? You can leave it for later, keep going, but that's something before I leave my mind.
Yeah, yeah, so that that's big, and again, that NWA integration was a huge selling piece to get more teacher buy-in. So now, the next piece is tutor.com. So one of the things I, okay, that wasn't me, I swear. One of, one of the things that I I definitely want to spotlight as as the next steps is celebrations. And it's very clear from today that our board knows how to celebrate, and that's a beautiful thing. And if we can have that same type of celebration happening in each and one of our classrooms after our students show growth in the NWA assessment, it will make a powerful impact in the system and in the school district. So I I've already mentioned this to our leaders, to our principals, that we got to come up with some type of system to celebrate teachers, students, classrooms, schools, right? Get everybody together, celebrating growth, right? Celebrating students improving, not just the ones who get straight A's, but students who make a goal and are able to meet their goal. I think that's a very important piece, and again, it it doesn't have to cost us any money. It it could be something like public acknowledgement. I mean, just saying something nice about somebody makes a huge, powerful impact, especially a student, right? Saying something nice about them. And when I was in the classroom, one of the biggest incentives that that students liked that I would do for them is I would send a night, I would make a phone call home and say something nice, and that's it. And they were so grateful and so happy that I called them home, and they had a great conversation with their parents, so something like that, right? I mean, you know, double-doubles from in and out doesn't hurt either, but still, you know, like, just an incentive like that makes a huge impact. Homework pass, you can sit wherever you want pass, and just celebrating them, saying, hey, so-and-so worked really hard this semester, they met their goal, and they grew. So we're very proud of you, right? So definitely working on those celebrations district-wide. And the next, the next piece is learning, right? Once we have our data, we're going to be able to see all the growth that's happening throughout the district, where is the growth happening, in which classrooms? And we want to talk to those teachers and leverage that internal expertise and see what's happening in your classroom that is not trickling down to the rest of the district. We want to find all those great best practices that are happening in in the classrooms, share them out throughout the district, as well as even reflecting ourselves on on some of the classrooms. Maybe you you didn't get the growth that you wanted, let's reflect, let's calibrate, readjust, and let's make some more, some adjustments for the next cycle for the NWA assessment. So a lot of adult learning happening in the in the winter, or after the winter assessment.
Right.
I'll leave the floor open for questions and comments.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. You know, it's nine fifty-five, and I'm glad that the principals were able to hear the entire presentation, and it'll be, they're free to go in five minutes. But I I did want to acknowledge something, and and, you know me and and the poems. But I wrote a, there was another poem here that I that we, that I created. For principals only and superintendents at administration, I want you to know how stressful, I know how stressful this year has started off. I've gone to schools, and I can see it in some of your faces. I've known you long enough to look at your faces and know, like, you've got a lot on your plate. And so I created this before we get into questions about next steps for math. You know, not only do you have the board kind of on Dr. Zuniga and and Dr. Rivas and the consultants and the TOSSA, but at the end of the day, you got to make it all happen at your schools and bring your team along. But know that I am fully aware of how much, all the pressures that you have. And so hear this, this is for you before you leave. In the Almani Union High School District's halls, leaders work tirelessly, giving their all. Principals, superintendent, and staff so fine, remember self-care is essential all the time. Don't feel guilty for taking a day or two for personal appointments, or family too. Mental health days or self-care time, you need it to shine and make your school shine. Health is golden, priceless, and true. Nothing replaces it, no matter what you do. As leaders, you must prioritize your well-being. To take care for students, teachers, staff, and parents, keep on shining. Superintendents handle the district with care, but don't forget your own health, show you truly care. Understand principals' stress when requests come through. Empathy and support will see them through. Board of Education's president reminds you, take care of yourself, it's essential, it's true. Money can't buy health, remember this always, your well-being matters in every single way. Thank you for going above and beyond, juggling demands with strength and bond. Keep taking care of yourself and your crew. In the Almani Union High School District, we're proud of you. Remember, leaders, self-care is key to unlock potential and set your school free. Prioritize health and well-being too, and you'll be amazing in all you do. And I truly mean that, because I don't care if you're president of the board or you're the superintendent, he and I always talk like, oh, man, I have to take my dad, he's a stroke patient, I got to take him to Rancho Los Amigos. Oh, you know what, Dr. Zuniga, I got to take my mom, go, go, go. And sometimes, I know you guys have parents too, loved ones, kids that you got to take care of. Please do not feel guilty, and and I'm saying this openly, and I know my board cares about mental health, because we know that if you're not well, you cannot lead your, the rest of your flock, your APs, your teachers, and all the way down, students, parents, whatever. Do not feel guilty. If you need to take a day off for mental health or whatever, please do so, you know? I don't care if a local report reporter sees you out in in Santa Monica or the beach eating popcorn on a Monday, you know? I don't care, it's your mental health day. Like, do not feel guilty about that. That's Board President Padilla telling you that. And I know that my board is is right there along with supporting your mental health as well. And I say that to Dr. Zuniga, to Dr. Rivas, if you have to, you have to. Because trust me, when you come back, no one will do the work that you still have to do. But if it means you going away and 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 re-energizing yourself and doing what you have to do to to get it together, please do not feel guilty about that. Dr. Zuniga, I've said it to you as a superintendent, you know, we have these conversations. We have parents that are around the same age that are becoming more fragile, and everybody has a, you know, a different life or a different person they need to care for. Please do so, okay? And again, it's one minute away, if you need to go at ten, or that's what we, the agreement. But let's get back to you, but I didn't want that to go unsaid. I needed to say that, so I I hope that you appreciate that. I'm a human being too, and I I know, I know you are too. So questions, Mr. Carlos Alcino. Again, it's ten o'clock, if you feel free, feel free to go, okay? Doctor, I mean, Mr. Carlos Alcero, questions?
So just, no questions, but just gratitude for all the organization and hard work. It was a good start, and I just look forward to future reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Carlos Alcero. Board Member, Mr. Florencio Breones.
No questions, thank you for the update tonight.
Thank you. Board Member, Mr. Qui Nguyen.
Yes.
Go right ahead.
You know, from the, from the data, you know, the aspect proficiency, you know, projected, so you lumped the ninth grade together, so you, when you add the the yellow and the orange, it's about almost like seventy-eight percent ninth grader is is level one, level two. That's alarming.
Yes.
I'm very depressed. Seventy-eight percent, you know, if it's true, then seventy-eight percent of our kid does not make the grade. Well, you know, for, you know, for I Am One. And you know, you know, like I say, our kid's start is very low, but you know, like I say, the thing, you know, the generate, the study plan and so-and-so, how you going to enforce it, how you going to help it, now you have a priority standard together? You know, and this is the big, biggest challenge, you know, that's what the execution part.
Yes.
Very, very important execution. I mean, now we know, now we assess, now we have the data, now we have a plan. But how? How, you know, right now, you know, in October, you develop a standard I Am One, and PETA be below, below it, and you know, and you know, moving on the the standard, and you know, have them catching up, it's a big task. You know, that's my worry, that's my biggest concern. And how, what kind of resource do we need beside tutor.com and iXL? Because we need some people to guide them, you know, to catch up to, you know? Because, because you're just changing one or two RIT level from the low, from low-level standard. Take a lot of effort, take so much effort beyond my imagination. And how window, you know, you're an expert, you are the expert. I'm just a parent, I have no credential, you know? But please enlighten me, how are you going to execute it?
Well, it's, it's, it's not as simple as just, you know, bringing a program like iXL that's going to fix everything. It's, it's a lot of systems that we're creating right now to help us get to that stage where we can see some good acceleration from our students. Again, goal-setting, right? Goal-setting wasn't happening in our district around data, bringing our students in, bringing parents in into those conversations, making it a team effort. That's, those are the the steps and the systems that need to be in place in order to ensure that everybody is working on the same unified goal, right? And like we've mentioned about other things, if it's important to the principal, if it's important to the teacher, the counselor, the parents, it's going to be important to the student. So we want to make sure that everybody's on board and everybody's working together to the same unified goal. And again, it's setting up those systems in place to set up all our stakeholders for success. And and that's what we're in the process of doing with the work we're doing around NWA, prioritizing the standards. There's still more work to be done, but we're headed in the right direction.
Even the la- the last presentation from Mountain View, I asking you, you know, about grading by bystander. They cannot do it, because you need to grade bystander, or the movie fail.
I'll add that there is usually when increasing achievement, and this is in my experience, since I've been a teacher, there's, you know, we want to cover the curriculum. And so, you know, the teachers have like a a set of lessons that they want to do in a year. And a lot of the times when the the pressure is on that, we don't worry about the mastery. So I do think level one, having the goal-setting, the priority standards, is like the first thing you have to do. And it may be one, two, three years before we start seeing the big shifts in colors, from red to yellow. But the important thing is that you take the time right now to be strategic and setting all this foundational work that you're not going to see necessarily move right now. However, based on the data I saw last year, and even in the conversations I'm having with the leaders, with their their math specialists in the room, there's already a lot of things that the different schools are doing that when we see the next data, we're going to see. There's going to be teachers that are accelerating learning at rates that are amazing. You had that last year, we didn't get to look at the data for that. But last year, we saw there are teachers, there are things that are happening in your district where teachers are accelerating, where schools together are being strategic about doing this work and really increasing achievement. And the goal is to learn from that. So once we get the winter, we see who's knocking it out of the park, who's having this amazing work, that's when we can be strategic and walk into the classrooms and find out what's happening there so we can really share the good news in that collective, and share that collective, you know, power. You know, I heard teachers, for example, at El Monte High School are doing spiral reviews or cumulative assessments. That's something so simple that I have seen in the past, and other schools and other districts show improvement and and really accelerate students' learning. And so that's not something that necessarily is happening everywhere. If it produces results, which I'm actually sure it will, then that's something that then can be promoted, where the teachers are learning from the expertise inside. There is a lot of things going inside that need to be passed out. So first, setting up the systems, taking our time to do that, making sure sure that it's not just like two years, it's gone, right? And so that's gonna take some time.
And if I can add to that, and a critical piece to our work is partnering with our feeder districts. And as we're looking at our data, recognizing that a lot of the work happens before they get to us. And so I'm happy to share that we've continued that work in collaboration with our partner districts, and they're heavily invested in, in this work as well. So that's starting with some summer collaboration that we did with them, bringing our math teachers together. We're engaging them in the prioritization of standards. And that's, that's one critical component to this whole math plan. The other piece that maybe wasn't highlighted is very strategic with the professional development that's happening. As we're looking at these results from NWA, it is about connecting where the students' gaps and skills are to the actual content that is grade level. So we're talking about not remediating standards necessarily for the sake of just filling in holes, but filling in holes consistent with what the content is in the moment now, using that data strategically to design instruction around those priority standards, what kids are ready for. So it's really about being strategic with the time that we have. And the prioritization of standards will help us use this data with, with NWA to make strategic decisions and empowering our teachers to feel like they can make those decisions together. The other piece that maybe hasn't been touched on, but collective efficacy is a huge lever in improving outcomes. And the work that we're doing in building capacity with teachers to collaborate with one another, to use insight together is another piece of this puzzle. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of things that will help us do that. It is complex. It isn't as Alejandro shared, you catch us by a program and that's gonna solve it for you. So part of our work is building those systems, empowering our folks, even making those connections to instructional vision and evidence-based practices and how those connect to mathematics. So that become daily practices in the way that we teach math. So there's a lot going on, and you're seeing only a glimpse of, of the entirety of the work that we're doing with mathematics. But there's, there's a lot more to that. So I hope that gives you a little bit of, of the picture of all of the things that we're kind of attacking this issue with. It isn't just one.
Yeah, it's a multifaceted problem. Yeah, so I understand it. But you know, when you look at the data presented by today, you know, it's the biggest challenge, you know, we ever seen in the history. And you know, because we've been ignored for so long now, we pay the price, you know? And that's the price we are paying right now.
Yeah, and we're committed and steadfast to that.
And that's why I
And that's what's, that's what's going to get us to, to those outcomes is consistently focusing on, on the same plan and not letting it go after a year. So as Catalina shared, it's gonna be slow progress, but we're putting things into place to make that happen. So it will require some patience on our ends to see some of those outcomes. But we are definitely putting a lot of things into place.
Yeah, because you know, we've been neglected so long now, now we take longer to recover. I understand the situation, yes. But it's not an easy thing to solve. But I need to thank you very much for your presentation, your hard work, your expertise in this matter. You know, it, it meant a lot to me. It meant a lot. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board Member, Mr. Qui Win. Board Member, Professor Stela Torres de Seiguris, any questions regarding tonight's math presentation?
Yes, I, this is only the initiatives. Is that right?
Yes.
Now, in base of these initiatives, you are going, you have already prepared the second part. Oh, how are you going to work? This is the initiative, the first part. Now, do you have another part that you are going to work with the students?
Well, in, in the meantime, so we, we gave the first test, the first two weeks of, yes, in, of August. And after the test, we provided professional development for all stakeholders, including teachers. And part of that training was learning how to use that Lexile Hub website to modify their, their lessons using iXL with NWA. So in, in the interim, we were to give them the next assessment. They're working on these instructional strategies in the classroom. And we're gonna see how effective this was in January when students take the winter NWA assessment again.
And the results are going to be really, the, the difference, difference, not the, according to the students, according to the, the schools.
Yeah, so the next phase will be to, to, once we get the winter results, like the bigger, I guess the second cycle of the continuous improvement is we'll look at that data, analyze that data. But we are also looking at data that's coming from the stakeholders. So the teachers already, the teachers already problem solving. And a lot of it is not always finding a solution, right? One of the things that's mentioned, like, yes, everybody goal set. But there's also a lot of questions about, okay, so what are the structures and systems for intervention? There's different levels of it. So was this, and there's all these conversations. A lot of the times, we're finding ourselves with the question, and, and we're coming back to the question. But right now, there, there's still a lot of systems that need to be discussed, talked about.
And organized.
Organized, right? There's 11th graders making history that were first tested in a, you know, they're not taking math class and were tested. That's another system. When are they gonna get support? So a lot of these things are not, listening to the stakeholders and building their trust. And I mean, this is teachers, students, and parents, it's gonna be very, and leaders, is gonna be very important. And not rushing into decision-making that's imposing things that they're not ready for. It's gonna also be very important.
Yes, it's not, not rushing. That's, that's the thing that we had before, no? Mr. Qui, before we tried to rush and put it to the next, the next step. Right now, we have to study. We have to check that they learned, that they understood. And then we can go to the next step.
And as experts, you learn from the experts that are doing the work, right? So part of the work we have to do is host the experts that are in front of the kids, the kids who are doing the learning, the parents who are the second, you know, the, the partner educators here. And so I think I always am careful, even though, yes, I understand systems, the, we have to feed our next moves based on the experience of this first cycle. So that we know that teachers are finding the professional development valuable. We need to make sure that we're sharing with them objectives ahead of time as much as possible. So that they know what they're gonna get in, you know, and out of these meetings.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Professor Stela Torres de Seiguris. All right. For me, Dr. Zuniga, you know, the, the presentation here where it says making A-plus adjustments to history? I, I don't want to see this again like this. I know that I have told you that to give to Catalina the, the seal that we, I don't know if you did, if you did.
I did. That was completely, that's on me. I apologize. I did get a logo and I will use it.
Because I want that visual to be seen district-wide, on our website, SuperPAC, everywhere. That is the logo that Dr. Zuniga created, or somebody helped him create it that tells the, the thing. And you know, it would be nice to like get some shirts, maybe in black, Dr. Zuniga, with our district logo. And maybe in the back, we could write down, what are some of the adjustments that we've made? Because tonight, we kinda talked a little bit about it, and you guys added the, you know, the cals, the vertical articulation. That, that's kinda like a little script of the, of the history of what we're doing or the, the, what's the word I'm looking for? Like, the road we've navigated to get to where we're gonna get to, so.
Historical data.
Yeah, you know what I mean? But like, on the back of a shirt, making A-plus adjustments to history. What the hell does that mean? Well, these are the adjustments that we made in our community or in our district to get us to tweak that data that is disproportionate with our Asian kids, you know, outperforming our kids for years. We can't, we didn't continue to do what we've always done. We're doing something differently. So again, I, I'm gonna be blunt, you know, I don't mince my words. I was bothered by that.
No, thank you. I appreciate that feedback.
Because I've been saying that, and then when I saw that, I'm like, come on.
My apologies.
It's all good. The other thing is, I get it that Mr. Qui wants to see like improvement, like really fast. I get it loud and clear that. It's kinda like when I said, how long does it take to get the power standard? Okay, take a step back, just chill, let it, let it develop and so forth. But the answer to his question is, it's a lot of moving parts. You gotta put the systems in place. Got it. So let me ask you this question, because I know that we cannot do this work alone. And whenever I go to conferences, particularly the California Latino School Board Association, and we specifically, specifically talk about the needs of Latino kids, all right? And English language learners and language arts, and that's another conversation and another initiative that we need to look at. And I kind of asked the question already, and I could tell we're all over the place in English language arts as well. But sticking to math, it is a K-14 issue, our education that our kids are getting. And math is not just our problem. A lot of the kids we're getting have things that should have been fixed in the elementary, but we're not a unified school district. So we have to be patient and work with our partners and not bully them and dictate stuff, but let it develop. Got it. But I wanna know, what is happening with the Rio Hondo Math Academies? I know that the neighboring school district, the Mountain View School District, who has, you know, very at-promised test scores, I'm not gonna lie, a lot lower than Almonte City School District. But that superintendent, you know, has, has taken the bull by the horns and said, I am going to use the community college. And some of their seventh and eighth graders are going over there to get, you know, free math classes. Where, where are we with that?
I'm gonna jump in and say I have a meeting scheduled with Yolanda Emerson next Tuesday, I believe, where we will be discussing our partnership and providing those programs. So hopefully, we can bring an MOU, an understanding to, to the board in the near future.
That will shut Mr. Padilla up. Because my question is, when will our students have access to that? Because we talk about access, like in terms of a timeline, I want an answer to that question. So I will be quiet because you've, you're all over it.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Perfect. My next question I have, or I know I threw it during the, during your presentation. What are the impressions that you guys have had while you've been walking to all of our high schools? Because you, Ms. Catalina Sines, stood here and you analyzed the data and all that. And I was critical, I said, okay, come on, man, like, how long is it gonna take for you to get out? Like, don't tell me you're just gonna analyze my district by looking at my data. You need to like, you do some leadership by walking around, you know, leadership by walking around or management walking around. What have you seen? Have you visited our schools? Because I was very critical about that, like, and I told Dr. Zuniga, I expect Ms. Catalina Sines and the TOSA to visit some schools and see it with their own eyes. So I wanna know, what are some of those impressions? I've heard a little bit that, you know, El Monte High School, and you saw this, like, tell me what else besides El Monte High School.
So right now, we worked mostly in meeting with the, so we've been at every site. That's a good news. And we've met mostly with the adult and the educators. We have not yet, I haven't. I know you have visited some classrooms.
When you say educators, do you mean math teachers or who?
The math teachers, the counselors, the school leaders, the VPs. I think one of the things that we wanted to focus on right now was really setting the systems. We still have a little bit of work to do on that. And we definitely do not want to walk into the math classroom without making sure that we're aligning whatever we're gonna gather with the walkthrough tool that's already being used in the district.
Okay, so is your answer to me, just hold off, Mr. Padilla, we're getting there?
We're gonna, yes. Well, the, the next step for us is making sure that we're meeting with the ed team and we're very intentional when we walk into those classrooms. So not yet, but we definitely wanna be strategic and it is coming.
So in terms of a timeline, you're the expert here. You work with many districts. In terms of a timeline, what does that mean for the board? When are we going to get more meaningful impressions of what you guys are doing? How long are you telling us to wait?
I'm, I'm looking, because I know we haven't, we, I want the, my recommendation to the district and to the team is that we set the time to be strategic first. And we need to do that now. So I would say that by the end of this October meeting, I don't, we don't recommend walking into the classroom without being strategic. So definitely using this month to think about what is that really gonna look like. So I would say like, within a month, sending you an update and saying like, here are the dates that we are having or thinking about. But I, I would say, we need to make sure that we answer that question with a strategy, not just going in there with, let's just general impressions. It has to be very targeted. So that's why you're seeing a hesitancy in me, because I wanna make sure that, I think you have a quote that says, from Abraham Lincoln, that says if you, if you're asked to cut a tree, you spend.
Oh, the, the quote goes, if you're given six hours to cut a tree, it's better to spend four hours of them sharpening your axe.
So now, we're not gonna wait that long. But the idea is to definitely be strategic, making sure we're not just randomly going into the classrooms, that we are aligning with what's going on in the walkthroughs. And so the, the goal will be to give you an update of whether we're doing it, we have scheduled by the end. I would say by the end of the month is a good, a good time.
All right. No further questions or?
And I would probably say a little farther out than that. I mean, being realistic, October is filled with a lot of professional development.
The priority standards are happening.
Priority standards work. To do that work feasibly, October is not a timeline I would be recommending. And I know we have some planning meetings coming up. My recommendation would be to probably start that off in January when we come back from break, just to allow for the process to pan itself out and to build some trust and relationships in the process. So my recommendation for ed services would be to wait until second semester.
Okay. So here's the deal. I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but that's very different what you said and what she said. So you all gotta get together. And you know, your date seems like way too far, because school ends in June. January, February, March, April, May, June, okay? And you're telling me October. So you all need to sit down and, and hash this out, because you're very far apart. I mean, we're not just gonna have Thanksgiving all, all, we're not gonna have a Thanksgiving holiday all in November. We're not gonna have, you know, all Christmas and all of December. There's still some instruction. There are two weeks, you know, three weeks in November. We still have this whole month. So, and again, this is the urgency that, that we have. And so I don't wanna like, you know, out of sight, out of mind, and then we don't talk math, and I don't really hear or read anything about it on my, on my memo. And I get it. And it was part of my poem today. I know we got a lot of things happening, but math needs to be like in the forefront. I don't know how more crystal clear that this board can be that, you know, again, I'm not gonna put you in the spot here, but both of you, you guys need to get together. Because what you said and what the assistant soup said is, is not very close. And this board did say that we were going to go with your recommendations as an outside person to press the issue. But another question I have is this, moving on to my next question. What are we doing to engage parents, more parent engagement on this stuff? Because you know, I tell Dr. Zuniga, attendance is not just, you know, child welfare job. It's everybody's job, you know? I've told the counselors, you know, we lost $4.7 million last year.
Seven.
Seven million, excuse me. And they're like, oh, lower our, our numbers to 250. I said, okay, well then help me, help me capture some more kids so that we're getting the ADA and so on and so forth. And the principals, I'm like, you need to know, you know, what your attendance percentage is. And I've been asking Dr. Laura Rivas, where is month one? I've been wanting it, because it hasn't ended. And we're, we wanna know, where are we starting? Because when I look at that data, the correlation's very, very clear. Okay, who has the worst attendance in this district? Mountain View. Who has the lowest test scores? Mountain View. You know, I don't mince my words. Attendance goes with data. Who has the highest math test scores? Arroyo and Rosemeat. Who has the highest attendance levels? Arroyo and Rosemeat. Like, it goes, it goes hand in hand. You don't need a rocket scientist or engineer or math person to tell you, kids that come to school more do better than kids that don't come to school, straight up. Like, I've done it for 32 years. That I am authority on. And so what are we doing to engage more parents? I get it that it's only 47, but you're right. It used to be zero. But what are we doing as a district to engage more parents in this conversation?
I think one of the, the big talking points that kinda came through from doing all these workshops with parents is, I'm not sure how other workshops were pre-framed in the past, but it, I got a general sense that the, some of the parents thought, oh, it's just gonna be like the same kinda workshop we've gotten before. Like, we don't have to go, something along those lines. So, and then once they came in, they actually saw the value in it. So I think for the same workshop, we're gonna do again in, in January, after we give out our, our next assessment, we're gonna do the same workshop, providing parents with data and resources. I think we're gonna get a lot more parent involvement, since we got a lot of really good feedback from these original workshops. And even some parents were actually reaching out to Dr. Rivas and Dr. McGinnis about how other strategies they could use to, to increase.
I get it. Your content for your workshop is great. I know it is. Because the parents have told me. My question is, what are we doing to get more parents to come see you? That's my question. What can we do? How are we going to reach out to more parents to get them to come see you? Like, what else can we do? What else have you done in other districts, Catalina Sines? Because this whole talking to the parents and setting goals was one of your recommendations that we are following through on. So how do we get more parents to come? Or what has worked in other districts to? So how do we get more parents to come, or what has worked in other districts to give more fire to this so that it fuels more people and we're not doing it by ourselves?
Some, what I've seen work is diversifying the times, you know. So we hear parents saying like, "Oh, you know, at, in the morning, at nine o'clock, it's harder." And we try to do that a little bit, but I would even say diverse, one of the strategies a parent mentioned in the email was including a Saturday workshop.
What email?
It was an email that was the parent sent, giving feedback about this process.
Okay.
And so one of the strategies, which I thought was a good strategy, is doing some Saturday workshops that allow for this work to happen. And so again, thinking about diversifying. Also, I think when we put out the information around like what the content is, being a little bit more descriptive and maybe more focused on, you're going to see your child's results and you're going to know how to read the data. Something that speaks to the actual content a little bit more, since it's so different. Another thing that I have seen is things like raffle something, you know, bringing food, doing a potluck style that brings people, food usually brings people together.
Dr. Zuniga, take note of that. And when she's saying raffle, parents like, like raffles. And one of the things they told me in Parent Super Pack, or during the, they're like, "Can you make sure that the, some of the things that we're getting, that they're not so cheap?" Parents straight up told me, like, "Some of the stuff you were giving was like cheap." So like, give them things that is going to incentivize them, that is going to, you know, speak to them and so on. And so ask them, what are some things they would like? Because if we want them to come, we're going to have to, to do that and invest. You know, we have to invest in that and then get the return, so.
One other thing that I've seen other, with some of the other networks that I work with is getting like, if you have a super pack, that's a really important thing, because you can co-design with them also ways that they can promote it. The word of mouth is really important. So anytime that they have school events, you know, things like that.
Got it. Dr. Zuniga, can we put Ms. Catalina Sines and Mr. Sanchez on the super pack agenda? All right, so thank you so much. No further questions. One thing I would like is, what are the next recommendations, I guess is my question? Give me three or four recommendations that the board should be looking for in the work that needs to be done. What are your next steps?
I think right now, I'm waiting to complete all the goal setting and, and action steps with the leaders. And then bringing that data into the math plan and having a more, like, more clear recommendations as to, "This is what needs to happen first. This may be a two, three-year process." And then creating a type of dashboard, a accountability dashboard that we can present to you, that then says, "Okay, this is what we can expect." Just like, you know, we're setting goals with everybody, everyone's going to be able to say like, "Did we meet the goals, did we not? What worked, what didn't, for us to be able to do the same?" But make them realistic goals. And I think this is the part that I'm still learning. We're about to finish the first set of leadership meetings. I have not yet brought that over to our team, which is why you've seen a little bit of this, because we haven't gotten together and I haven't seen everything that's on, you know, mental health, everything that's on the plate of everybody. And so the idea is to come in and be much more qualitative and quantitative to you and say, "Okay, this is a, this is what's starting, this is when it should end, this is, this is when this other thing's going to start and this is what should end." So things like increasing math minutes, adopting the textbooks are things that are in, in my mind. But we cannot put that first. These other pieces have to happen first before that.
Got it. Thank you very much, Catalina Sines and Alejandro Sanchez. Truly enjoyed your presentation. Thank you for the work that you do. I know it's a hard, hard thing to, to take on, but we appreciate you. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you so much.
Moving right along, we're going to move on to item F, F as in Frank, for regular agenda. Item number one, consider approval to award RFP number 2024-2025 P5 DSA Inspector of Record Services for the Rosemead Adult Education and Transition Center to TYR Incorporated. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Florencio Breones. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F2, consider approval to award RFP number 2024-25 P6 Material Testing and Inspection Lab of Record Services for the Rosemead Adult Education and Transition Center Project to American Engineering Laboratories Incorporated. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Can I get a second?
Second.
I got a second by Board Member Mr. Qui Win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F3, consider award of RFP number 2024-25 P1 Security Guard Services to Altech Industries Incorporated. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Mr. Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Florencio Breones. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F4, consider approval to utilize the Omnia Partners Cooperative Services Contract number 07-105 for the Mamava lactation pods purchases throughout the 2024-25 school year. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
I got a second by Board Member Mr. Florencio Breones. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Zuniga, can we get a story on that?
Yeah.
A story about being, you know, supportive of, or supporting our teachers that are in need of this, this type of pod? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Item F5, consider approval to enter into agreement with Otis Elevator Company to provide services to maintain, repair, test, and inspect the elevator at Fernando Arla Desma High School. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, move to approve by Board Member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Can I get a second?
Second.
I got a second by Board Member Mr. Qui Win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F6, consider approval to ratify the subscription of the school site locator from MGT Impact Solutions LLC, formerly known as Davis Demographics. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
To approve by Board Member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Carlos Alcedo. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So it used to be Davis Demographics, now it's going to be, what is it called now?
MGT.
MGT Impact Solutions, okay. Item number seven, consider approval to enter into an agreement between El Monte Union High School District and IBE Digital. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I got a motion to approve by Board Member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Carlos Alcedo. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Nay.
I'm sorry?
It was a nay on that one.
All right, we got four yays and one nay. For the record, Ms. Alma Regosa? Thank you. Moving on to F8, consider approval of agreement between El Monte Union High School District and the City of El Monte for the joint use of facilities. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Can I get a second?
A second.
I got a second by Board Member Mr. Qui Win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F9, consider approval to utilize the CaraSoft Quilt Contract MSA 05012019F for the procurement of endpoint detection and response cybersecurity provider Crouch Strike for a term of 36 months. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F10, consider approval of amendment number one to the agreement between the El Monte Union High School District and Emerges Healthcare Staffing Incorporated to reflect new name and amount. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Florencio Breones. What is the new name going to be? We don't know yet?
The new name is, as you're seeing it there, this is formally known as Maxim, so Emerges is the new name.
Okay, I missed it, because there's no Maxes on there. It just says, there's no Maxes on there. I know Maxes. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item F10, consider approval of professional services agreement between the El Monte Union High School District.
This is item 11.
11.
We're on 11?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Item 11, consider approval of professional services agreement between the El Monte Union High School District and Simon Psychological Assessment Group to provide an independent evaluation in the areas of psychoeducational education for special education students. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Qui Win. Seconded by, by Mr. Board Member Carlos Alcedo. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 12, consider approval of proposal between the El Monte Union High School District and Institutional Compliance Solutions LLC ICS for Title IX Training for the El Monte Union High School District Staff and Students.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Florencio Breones. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 13, consider approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between the El Monte Union High School District and Altimat Health Services. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui Win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 14, that's F14, right? Yes, F as in Frank, 14, on the regular agenda. Consider approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between the El Monte Union High School District and Maryville University for Clinical Fieldwork Practicum Education. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Can I get a second?
A second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui Win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F15 on the regular agenda. Consider approval of Resolution Number 07-2425 on sufficiency of instructional materials as required by Education Code Section 60119 for the 2024-2025 school year. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Qui Win. Can I get a second? I will second it. Seconded by Mr. Padilla. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F16, consider approval of Resolution Number 08-2425 in support of bullying prevention. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Can I get a second?
A second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui Win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F17, consider approval of Resolution Number 09-2425 celebrating National Coming Out Day. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
Move.
Seconded by Board Member Qui Win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F18, consider approval of Resolution Number 10-2425 in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Board Member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Consider approval of Resolution Number 11-2425 for Week of the School Administrator. Question, what are we doing for the Week of School Administrator? Dr. Zuniga, are we providing anything?
We usually provide lunch for all the school sites.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Edward Zuniga. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, I have a motion to approve by Board Member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a second by Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 20, consider approval of Resolution Number 12-2425 approving absence of board member from previous Board of Trustees meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Can I get a second?
A second.
I got a second by Board Member Qui Win. Let's call for the vote. Mr. Breones?
Aye.
Professor Stella Torres de Seigres?
Aye.
Mr. Padilla is an aye. Mr. Qui Win?
Aye.
Mr. Carlos Alcedo?
Same.
Got it. 21, item, item is approved. Item 21, consider approval of reorganization of the Information Services Department to include a job description for the network technician. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui Win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F22, consider approval of reorganization of Transportation Department to include a new job description for the scheduler or the dispatcher. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by?
Second.
By Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F23 on the regular agenda. Consider approval of the reorganization of the para educator positions to include revised job descriptions for the para educator academic support, para educator behavior support and, and para educator healthcare support. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Can I get a second?
A second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui Win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F24, consider approval of the district sponsorship or donation to the El Monte, South El Monte Emergency Resources Association, the El Monte Promise Foundation, and the El Monte Police Officers Association to support El Monte Union High School District families and students. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move, move to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
A second.
Seconded by Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are now on item G on the agenda. Item G is roundtable and the closure of this meeting. G1, topics or issues to be brought forward for future agenda items. Mr. Board Member, Mr. Carlos Alcedo?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Board Member, Mr. Florencio Breones?
No items tonight, thank you.
Board Member, Mr. Qui Win?
No.
Board Member, Professor Stella Torres de Seigres?
No.
And I have none. Moving on to G2, closed session.
I have, I have just one item.
You have one item for, I'm sorry, I skipped you, issues to be brought forward for future agenda. Superintendent Dr. Edward Zuniga?
Just, we're in preparation, if the board is interested, we are going to be groundbreaking for El Monte High School's track and field, synthetic track and field. We're looking possibly starting late October. So anytime late October would be available if the board is interested in doing a groundbreaking for the track and field.
Okay, board members, can we please look at our calendars so that we could, everything's kind of crazy and busy?
I am proposing two possible dates.
Hey, give us the first one first and let us look.
The first one is October 30th, Wednesday.
Okay, everybody, can you look at your, at your 30th? I'm available October 30th. Mr. Alcedo?
I'm available.
Okay, Mr. Florencio Breones?
I'm available.
Mr. Qui Win?
I'm available.
Professor Stella Torres de Seigres, Wednesday, October 30th.
Wednesday, October 30th, yes.
What time, Dr. Zuniga?
I would propose five o'clock.
Okay, everybody had an open calendar, so we'll do it at five o'clock. El Monte High School, this is groundbreaking or ribbon cutting?
This is groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking for what?
For the El Monte High School Track and Field.
Track and Field.
Yeah. They will be playing one more game. I think that was false advertising. Because it was, it was further delayed a little bit. They're allowing them to use one more football game tomorrow, Friday night, I'm sorry.
Got it. So you got your date. El Monte High School, groundbreaking, five o'clock, track and field, October 30th. Anything else?
That's it, sir.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to invite our attorney, Mr. Terrence Gallagher from Olivares and Madruga Law Organization, to go ahead and read out our items from closed session. The board will not reconvene, we covered all items. Attorney Terrence Gallagher, please report out from closed session.
Referencing the agenda, item A2 subsection A and B, the board received information, no final action was taken.
Thank you, Mr. Terrence Gallagher. Always appreciate your, your reading out and all of the service that you provide to the El Monte Union High School District. And please give our, our best to Rick Olivares. I know that he was not able to make it today, but we're looking forward to recognizing your firm for the recognition that you guys got with an outside agency, and we'll talk about that in the next meeting. All right, at this time, the El Monte Union High School District Board of Education Meeting for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, will be adjourned at 10:44 PM. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.